Call the regular meeting of the Bucksport Town Council order for August the fourteenth. A couple of housekeeping items before we get started. First thing, before we even call the roll, I do want to mention that this evening is Counselor Tarian's wedding anniversary. It is her twenty-seventh wedding anniversary, and so I just wanted to know that it is her anniversary.
Thank you all for coming.
Second, now that I've been embarrassed for just a little bit, the standard speech that I give before every meeting. This would be a wonderful time for you to make sure that your cellphones are silent. If you would like to speak this evening, please come to the podium, state your name and your address. We have microphones in here so that people that can't attend the meeting can see and hear the meeting. The microphones pick up everything, so if you're in the back of the room, sitting next to Director Gagin, and you whisper something in his ear, there's a very good chance it is going to be picked up on the microphone. I'd like to warn everybody of that. And then we will... I think that's all I have for housekeeping at the moment. So we'll have to call the roll.
Counselor Tarian?
Present.
Counselor Hare?
Here.
Mayor Bissonnet?
Here.
Counselor Rabs?
Counselor Bishop?
Here.
Counselor Reink?
Here.
Counselor Eastman's excuse this evening.
Thank you.
Presentation of any town council recognitions? I don't think we have it. We do, oh yes, I was gonna do it right after this. Okay. We do have the swearing in of Rachel Britton as full-time dispatcher.
Hi, Rachel. Yep, you're perfect. All right, you ready? Okay. So I state your name.
I, Rachel Britton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws.
And will obey the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Maine.
And of the state of Maine.
That I will.
That I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the charter and ordinances.
Of the charter and ordinances.
Of the town of Bucksport.
Of the town of Bucksport.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of dispatcher.
Of dispatcher.
For the town of Bucksport.
For the town of Bucksport.
Great, and then I'll grab a pencil and sign it.
Thank you.
I'll just sign right here. Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm sure if you have folks with you, Rachel, you're more than welcome to stay. Please don't get me wrong. But if you, you're also free.
You're welcome.
Yep, absolutely. Next, we are gonna consider minutes of our previous meetings. We have three minutes, sets of minutes to consider. Infrastructure and properties committee meeting of July the tenth, the regular town council meeting of July the tenth, and a town council workshop of August the seventh. I will assume everyone's had a chance to review them. Questions or Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve.
Second. All's in favor? Let's see. For reports, documents, and correspondence, we have the Verona Island Police Call on July tenth, eleventh, twentieth, and twenty-fourth included in your packet, as well as the ridership report for June and July from Down East Transportation. You have your department head reports for July, and speaking, giving the report from the Infrastructure and Properties Committee right before this meeting, Counselor Hare.
Great. We had a, an infrastructure and properties committee meeting just before this, this meeting tonight, and so we had only one item on the agenda. We had a request from Sandy Holmes, formerly of Bucksport Enterprise, to donate the Howard replica to model street clock that's on the former enterprise property. The committee decided, we didn't have enough information to put it forward as a recommendation because there will be a financial cost to that unless we can get sort of a volunteer to do the wiring and things like that. So not having enough information, we wanted to move it to council for further discussion at the next scheduled council meeting. And then we adjourned. And we had great public input from folks in the room, so that was helpful.
Thank you, Counselor. Questions? Yes.
Is that currently located in the town's right-of-way right now or not?
Hmm. It's on the fair side of the sidewalk.
Okay.
Six back clear.
Yeah, it does.
Doesn't fare well.
Okay. It's on a big concrete slab, and it also is wired under climb.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. We do not have any discussion items this evening, nor do we have any public hearings. We have no new ordinances to consider. We do have a number of agenda items, however. The first is resolve twenty-two-six dash one-zero to approve the sewer commitment for the period of April first, twenty-twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. The council, proceeding, motion to approve.
Second.
All's in favor? Opposed? Resolve twenty-two-six dash eleven, requesting enrollment of the town of Bucksport and the community resilience partnership and application for no local match funding. I believe Mr. Kratz is here this evening, as well as the committee chair. Mr. Chair, Mr. Chapman? Close our.
Yes, I'm here before you as the committee chair to answer any questions that you may have on this matter that's before you. And the service provider who is funded by the Governor's Office of Policy Innovation and the Future, as you mentioned, Mr. Allen Kratz is also here and is graciously offered to answer any questions that you have about this. Very briefly, in the committee, the council formed the Community Resilience Committee, of which I'm the chair, in order to explore the possibility of getting funding from the Governor's Office of Policy Innovation in the Future in their community part, resilience partnership program. And to that end, in order to be eligible for funding, the town needs to join the community partnership, and that's what the result before you is intending to do. Following that, we expect, the committee expects to be able to then present to you a grant application. It's in draft form at the present time. The original schedule for submittal of that application was last year. After our final meeting, we discovered that what we were working on was not eligible for funding. We persevered. This year, we have another set of projects in mind that we're trying to go forward with. Because of the implementation plan that we have for that involving hiring a Island Institute fellow, the timing of the Island Institute fellow process causes the committee to delay their application rather than by the deadline at the end of this month to next February in order that the schedule of the person that we would hire to help implement the program would correspond to the funding, the time period of the funding if we were to receive the funding. It's a competitive grant program. We think we have a strong set of ideas, and you would be hearing more from us when we got to that point. And I'm more than happy to answer any other questions. And I'm pleased, more than happy to have Ellen.
And I thought, I want to add to that it's a no-match grant, so Bucksport doesn't have to put money down to, to get this grant.
The reason it's a no-match grant is because we've identified a project that fits one of the roughly one hundred categories, and that's what those letter-numbered paragraphs refer to.
Mr. Kratz, you've come all this way. Would you like to add anything?
Would the grant cover the person you're trying to hire?
Hold on, just a minute. I'll, I'll, that's okay. I'll ask for, yep.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Kratz, yep.
Yes, for the record, my name is Allen, A-L-L-E-N, Kratz, K-R-A-T-Z. Thank you for inviting me up. Your chair's said everything very well. I'll happily respond to many questions that you might have. And I think I heard one from the audience.
Actually, the person's question in the audience maybe.
We do have a question from the, from the member of the public. Yep.
Would the grant cover the person that you're going to be hiring?
Yes, the grant is intended to cover all of the amount that would be paid to the Island Institute for the placement of a fellow here in Bucksport.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Public as well. Counselor Rabs?
Just, just, just a general piece of information. This is an unusually large crowd for us tonight. And at times, it's gonna seem like we're going through some of the things on our agenda pretty quick. But in advance, we have received a hundred and sixteen-page email that has all kinds of spreadsheets and documents that we have gone through ahead of time. So if you feel like, boy, they're going awfully quick, it's because we've had this packet. You can also usually get ahold of this packet a day before the meeting online, take a look at it yourself. But again, it seems like we're going a little quick. We've had the packet for quite some time, and be happy to take a pause and answer your questions too.
Mr. Kratz, would you just elaborate on the other communities that we're joining in with?
Yeah, yes, there are a number of, there are several hundred communities across the state of Maine that have enrolled. Orland has enrolled, Verona Island has enrolled, all of the towns on the Blue Hill Peninsula, that's nine of them. It's a very well-regarded program. And I want to commend also the fact that the legislature, on a bipartisan basis, has instituted this program several years ago. And I know you've written letters of support for various applications that the town of Surrey, for example, has put in. And we really appreciate the bipartisan, bicameral support for this program.
If, if you wouldn't mind, because there's a lot of people who have no idea what we're talking about, can you just give the one-minute version of what's happening here?
Yes. The Maine Climate Council issued recommendations for addressing climate change in the state of Maine. Coming out of that was a program called the Community Resilience Partnership that enabled towns across Maine to apply for funding. As commission, as Council Member Hare mentioned, it's no local match funding, to do three types of programs: community resilience, climate resilience, energy efficiency, and greenhouse gas reduction. And you'll see, as your chair mentioned here on the resolution, all of these are itemized here. So this is an effort to enable towns to get no local match funding and to use that funding often as a local match for federal funding and other funding. So it's really meant to enhance the role of what towns are already doing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Got a question?
Oh, I apologize. Hope you're hiding. There you go.
Is this deal gonna cost the town of Bucksport any money?
Can you please come up to the?
I can.
Yep.
I may know, I might stay longer than you want.
So, does this, is this gonna cost the town of Bucksport any money out of their pocket?
The answer is no.
So we, no funding to you people at all. I would be asking this a lot tonight, because we don't have any money. So we need to look at the books before we spend a penny.
It's a community resiliency partnership and application for no local match funding.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going to.
Sir?
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize for not addressing you properly earlier.
Please, I'm not.
Joshua Peters, Seventeen Maple Ridge Drive, here in Bucksport. You said one hundred and sixteen pages?
No, no, I did. I said tonight, we have, in advance of the meeting, received a hundred and sixteen pages of documents to review, spreadsheets, emails, et cetera. So I just said that if it seems at times we're motoring along through some of this stuff, it's because we've, we've had the packet ahead of time, we reviewed it. And you can also go online and take a look at the same packet that we have in front of us tonight.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Rabs. Counselor, did you read all one hundred and sixteen pages from the back?
I go through all the pages. I mean.
One hundred and sixteen?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
That's our town manager.
Our town manager, my apologies. I, I'm just new here to the area, so.
I took the packet together.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rabs?
Absolutely.
Mr. Rabs, twice, I'll give you two check marks.
No, I didn't read all sixteen.
Thank you.
Line by line, no.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
We have a motion in a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All's in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kratz.
Thank you very much.
Before we move on. Let's, I understand there are a lot of people here to talk this evening about one particular The conversation, I want, let me be clear. I have several jobs this evening. My job is to, first of all, I want to make sure everybody has a chance to speak. I want to make sure everybody has a chance to, if they have something that they want to say, that they have the opportunity to say that. My, one thing that I want to get straight, because it's in the town code, it is my responsibility to make sure the following happens. Counselors are not to be interrupted. There's one person in this room who can interrupt a council, and that's me. No one in this room can inter, can interrupt me. That's not me being a dictator. It goes against my grain, as I told the town manager this evening. I double-checked the town code because I wanted to see it in writing. This council elected me to be the mayor for that reason. I will make sure that everybody has a chance to speak tonight. I, I may ask people at times to, you know, I may have to set a limit. We have a lot of people in this room. I am a firm believer in the following: meetings like this go much better at minute eighty-nine than they do at minute ninety-one. That doesn't mean I'm shutting down a meeting at eight-thirty, I promise you that. We're going to maintain an orderly, proper meeting. It is in the town code that if there is any disruption at all in this meeting, I will use the words that are in the town code: impertinence, yelling, foot stomping. It, it is my responsibility to warn you, and if it continues, move on. I am not worried about that, but now I'm level-setting because the, the conversation has already kind of done this this evening. I mean, I want to get ahead of it. The packet that Mr., that Counselor Rabs was referring to is the packet that we receive before every meeting. So some of the things that we're taking action on are, it's just the additional detail. That is all public information.
Yeah.
I, I promise you, every counselor has read that, every page of that document prior to every meeting. Unless, if they haven't, they usually will give me a heads-up because something's happened or they're gonna miss a meeting or something like that. So I want to be clear. I'm not trying to play heavy. I'm not trying to do anything of the sort. It is my responsibility. I take it seriously to make sure that everybody has a chance to speak this evening, but it is gonna happen in a particular way. I'm gonna say one more thing. There's been a lot of information bandied about on social media, things like that. Some of the things that are out on social media and other places, I'm gonna say Another thing that's been happening on social media is that there have been people going after town employees. You will have a better chance this evening coming after me before we get personal with any town employees or any other counselor. That I will assure you. It also says in the town code that any, in a meeting like this, any personal attacks, anything like that, it is my responsibility to address that. And if I don't, this council has a responsibility to remove me as mayor in that meeting until I get my stuff together. Not trying to play the heavy. It's the last time I'm gonna say it. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. Okay? All right. Thank you.
Sir?
Yes?
Is there anybody who could speak louder? Because that's how the hallway cannot be heard.
Yeah, I can't.
I can't even hear you.
Sorry.
Okay. No, no, no. Then I need to know that. I will absolutely try to speak louder. Thank you very much. Yep.
Thank you.
Now I need to remember where my, all right. Resolve twenty-two-six dash one-two, approving capital improvement program request for replacement of transfer station trailer.
Yes, our public works director is here this evening. He and our highway mechanic have put some work into this, okay, if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, I realize not the most opportune time we're talking about purchases, but this is a.
Jay, sorry. Just speak up for me. Speak up a little.
The, we're at a level of urgency with the trash trailer that we haul our refuse from, from the transfer station to the landfill. And we've, after a long process, found a company that can build a trailer for us at a discounted price compared to other things in the market and do it in a short amount of time. And this is the packet that's in front of you
So the, the current trailer is, to my understanding, not gonna take a sticker again.
It will not.
And the other one is already?
The, that one has already been removed from the road due to the, the, the frame issues with rust and whatnot.
So essentially, if we don't have this.
If we don't have this.
Transfer station comes to a halt.
It could come to a halt, and we would not have any way to haul the town's trash.
I guess.
Unless we hire it out, which is gonna be more.
Which would be far more costly, yep.
Well, okay, I got it.
Yeah, I, I, I struggle with it because it wasn't in our capital improvements budget. And with rust, it's not like something that happens overnight. So I'm just a little concerned about that. But you're saying it's sort of emergency, like how far emergency is it like?
We don't have another year.
We don't have another, but year. Okay.
And to be clear, I have brought this up in the budget process for going on six to seven years now. Warning, warning, it's coming. We need to, we need, and the money hasn't been there. But it's, it's level emergency right now, unfortunately.
When you, when Tracy's finished.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I want to go down the same route that Tracy did. We're calling this a, I understand it's an emergency program, but how did we get to this place? Rust doesn't occur overnight and rotting out of the trailer, why wasn't it repaired as we went along? That's the first question. Number two is, I went over to the transfer station the other day, and the compactor had been removed. And one of the attendants at the station said that that was at the request of the town council. Well, I know that we had agreed earlier, weeks ago, that we were gonna remove that, but nothing came before the council to remove that compactor. There is some money to be saved, but we have two trailers. Now we're down to one, and we've taken the compactor away, which to me was like our emergency backup. If, with the trailer being down, if we lose the other trailer, what are we gonna do? Bring in dumpsters to haul our, at a, at a, anyway. So I'm struggling with that. And then I'm reading the article tonight, and it says a capital improvement program. And I've gone back to our budget under capital improvement. The only thing I can see under town garage is tire machine and balancer. There's nothing here about a replacement trailer. So I'd like to be able to go outside and shake that tree and get all the money to fall out to pay for this trailer, but I get it's an emergency, but I don't see where the planning was, Jay, in going into this. I'm, 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 that's just where my head's at. I'm, we gotta move the trash. I'm gonna vote for it, but I'm not a happy camper tonight, I'll have to tell you.
I'm, I'm not happy to have to ask for it. I'm sorry.
So, this is the blue trailer, right? It's blue?
Yes.
It's like Smurf blue?
Yes.
This is the one Matt's been patching up for the last six or seven?
We, we have done extensive repairs two to three different times to, to the trailers up to this point. Yep.
In fairness to Jay, I think back in the day, it used to be that these trailers were being swapped out, sold out, whatever, about every ten years. And that seems to have fallen by the wayside.
Yes.
So I, I, I get some of that, but right now, there's.
Are you here?
This, this, this is a significant puddle of money. We had another request, and we've kind of asked them to, to put that aside so we can handle this one. And like I say, Councilwoman's Tracy over here brought up the, went, and she was exactly right. It wasn't in the capital program. It was like, you know?
But that would not be for, in public works budget.
Okay.
That would be the transfer station or, that's where that would have been in the, not in my own.
Thank you.
Any more tough questions?
Uh, no. Jacob, did you, I know in the past we've had like departmental issues and options. Did you compare any other options, or is this, or is this old hat in such old news that we know this is our easiest way out?
This is the cheapest way out. We had.
There's a timeliness issue, isn't there? There's only two vendors, and one's an extended period versus a rather.
Yes.
Quite turnaround.
Yeah, I mean, there's that. We, we had discussions internally with, about a number of different options. The biggest challenge is the fact that that facility was built around the compactor that is downstairs.
Ah.
That came from Loring Air Force Base, I don't know how many decades ago.
Thirty to forty years ago.
Um, but that building is built around that. And so to try and retrofit anything separate from what we are already doing would be considerably more costly than what is before you this evening.
Even the contractor roll-offs would be.
Yes.
Probably four times this amount to get the amount needed.
Okay.
So, and it says it's coming from the solid waste equipment reserve.
Correct. You would, the way that the resolve is written is that this would be funded through a three-year loan. That first payment would come out of that reserve, and then in next year's budget, you, we would need to anticipate that payment.
I don't, I don't see any other options. That's the bottom line.
And just to be clear, we used to have two trailers, and this would give us one, correct?
This only would give us one. And what we're using now, the trailer we're using now, even though you would have a new one, it would be a backup, but it won't be able to be a backup for very long. And we don't, this is, the, the goal is to be back to a two-trailer setup, which would allow us to swap trailers out, and we don't have the chaos of trash piled up in the hopper because there's no place for it to go and no one to haul
Any other questions?
I, the only thing that I think I would add as we look forward long-term on this is it probably would behoove the council, and it's probably something that's going to come up as we move forward, is just, we should anticipate considering how we're gonna deal with this problem moving forward. Because from everything that I've heard, the, right, the words that the town manager has indicated in terms of building around, retrofitting and building around, and, and the question that needs to be asked is just how sustainable is that? I understand the point we're at now, but I think, as I'm sure we'll talk about a lot much later this evening, I think in terms of this, the feasibility of sustaining this, this moving forward, we really need to get to a place where we're taking a look at all kinds of things. But in, in this case, all of our options moving forward and seeing what they cost, not just year over year, but five, ten years.
Term, yep.
So, something I will speak about with the town manager, and if anybody has any ideas, and I'm not just talking about the seven people sitting right here, can move forward on that.
Thanks, Trey.
Thank you, Jay. Yep. Don.
Don White, Town Farm Road, just a question about this. Does the urgency of this situation have anything to do with the town discontinuing its recycling program? Does it create an urgent, a more urgent situation?
Jay could answer that? I don't have an answer to that.
What I can say to that is, we, in the bud- Uh uh, what I can say to that is, we, in the budget process. Knew that in the very near future, the new plant is gonna be opening for recycling. A zero sort of recycling, like we used to do years ago. They're not open yet, but they will be in this budget cycle, is what we're being told. So that's why we eliminated the the program and inappropriate money for that recycling. Because we're paying two hundred and twenty dollars a ton versus seventy. For the trash. It's considerably more money per ton. That was what we considered, why we did that.
Is it appropriate to talk about the recycling program at this point, or should I wait? I mean, it's kind of. It's hooked on it a little bit, but.
Okay, I'll get it.
Just just a couple of questions about the 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 town. Discontinuing the the recycling program, which will add, it appears, uh, some urgency to the situation. The facility, but that Innovative Solutions has now taken ownership of. That, that whole situation, we've heard the story that they're gonna start for what, eight or nine years? I think Council Rab, you were, when we were talking about it a long time ago between Perk and you had some serious questions about it. Are we sure that this thing is gonna work? Right now, they're just taking in trash, as I understand it, and not. I've had, I've had some brief discussions with you, Jacob, about this. Is it, is it? Are we, have we been assured that they're going to take our trash?
Contractually, they they have to.
They've put, they've put it on paper. That that, when will that start, sir?
They have started accepting a limited number of municipalities right now. They're acting as a transfer station right now. They are not separating recyclables at this time. But in my conversation with um, the executive director of that facility. Be assured me that we would be likely sometime within the next three to four months at that facility.
That we would be taking our trash there and they would be storing it because they're not yet up and running, is that correct?
At that point, they plan on being.
Up and running?
Fully operational.
How much money has the town of Bucksport put into this facility already?
Into which facility?
Into the M I that, the the so-called Fiber Right Facility that is now Innovative Solutions. Do we have any idea?
I do not have.
Does anybody have any idea?
The only thing I know is what we read in the newspaper about what's going on in Bangor Daily News is. And and you're right, back, back ten years ago when I was on council, yes, it was a Merck versus Perk. They, and the Merck thing never really got up and running and then the Perk was there and then then Perk went away, became a new owner. It's. No pun intended, it's a mess.
Yeah, not to belabor this, but it I think it's hooked on and I think because of past history. That, that that plan has been a dismal failure since since it started, in some people's opinions. It's cost money and it's cost effort. And I hope it, I hope we're we're in a different place and I hope we can put our, put our stuff there. I uh. And we've also put some money in. I think the town of Bucksport is putting considerable money, but amount of money already into that facility. And have received no- nothing in return is is what I, is what I think. So I hope it works, uh, but I need, I I I hope we keep our eyes open. That that technology is is not in in focus yet and nor it has been. And we have been promised this before. Thank you.
No, Don, you're right. Uh, the the, yeah, at the end of the day, there are contractual obligations that at this point in time are being met, but. As I, I think I said to you before and it was not in twenty twenty-five, it's, I'm with all of that. I'm at a place where I'll believe it when I see it. And anybody doesn't like that statement, that's too bad. Um, their records speaks for themselves, so. And hopefully it works out, because. This whole zone needs both of those places operating. Uh, any other questions or comments? So this hand first and then you're next, sir.
Okay. I got a question on this trash trailer. How much are you gonna cost to buy a new one?
That we're, one that we're considering this evening, one hundred and thirteen thousand five hundred and sixty.
Has anybody looked it over? That maybe could repair the one we have?
Yes.
You've had people that's uh qualified?
That's what, that's what's been happening for, I, Jay, five or six years.
Five or six years.
Okay. Guess we shouldn't have waited so long. Okay, so you're only gonna buy one though, right?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Can't, pockets won't take much.
Sir.
I just wanna know if this facility costs more than twelve dollars and fifty cents a household. The facility, the running it, the employing the people, the trailers. And fifty cents a household a week.
Transfer station is roughly three hundred thousand dollars plus. Personnel benefits for typical time employees.
In order to better answer your question, I'd wanna give people.
Point is, we could pay that twelve fifty a week as a household and have somebody come pick our garbage up. That's my point on that. I don't know the numbers I'm asking.
Yeah.
But if it's more than twelve fifty, the whole program don't make sense. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman's again, Williams?
Uh, two, just quick questions. Uh, how long was this on the agenda?
How long was this?
The the trash discussion on the agenda?
Came out. When the, when the agenda was was issued.
When was the agenda issued?
Uh, it would, we posted it Tuesday.
Tuesday. And last question, thank you. Uh, are you guys directly responsible for all financial decisions related to the city of Bucksport?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Anyone else?
One more. Can we get the number and see if?
Yeah, oh, yes. I, I alluded to a moment ago that I want the council to consider all options moving forward. You've presented an option. I would like to pursue all options. Um, I haven't.
Say we couldn't get a better rate, the whole town came in on it.
I, there there's all kinds of options that I would like to consider. Yep.
You should have any rough numbers, Steve?
Yeah, sixteen forty-three if we did it by population.
Sixteen forty-three a week?
By population. Not by household, that's, that's population.
By population, okay.
So I just have a question about the recycling. Why did we do away with what we were using? To wait for this recycling program that might be three or four months out? I have recycling right now piling up in my garage. I refuse to put it in the hopper. I recycle for a reason.
Sure.
So why did we get rid of it if we were gonna be three or four months before we get it?
Oh, I'm sorry, Jacob. I thought you would, wanted to take that. Don, not to put you on the spot or anything, I thought I'd seen you, yep.
And just as as Jay has mentioned, you know, we, I believe going through the the budget process, the council knew that. We'd be transitioning to that facility and looking. In every avenue to save money throughout the budget process, that was a cost savings.
But is it a cost savings? I've got recycling piling up in my garage. Plus my taxes went up, so I'm paying more taxes to store my recycling in my garage. Just ask it.
Statewide, there is a major trash problem.
Yep.
Whatever. We had a recycling program.
And whatever.
And we got away with it. Did away with it.
And three, I think it was like three months ago, we got an email on this and we did this to save money, is what we did.
Because it was, there was also a finite time period, right? Like if it was, we're never gonna do any more recycling. We're only doing this instead of spend two hundred and twenty dollars a ton, seventy dollars a ton. That would have been a different conversation, where this was a finite amount of time. I'm not talking out both sides of my mouth. You heard me also a moment ago say that I'm kind of at a place with the, with. Everything trash related in the state of Maine over the last decade, that I'm kind of at a place where I'll believe it when I see it. But given everything that we've been told on the contractual obligations that we, that people have with us. That was why that decision was made. I certainly see your point, right, that you've made a decision. Um, I think you're in all likelihood not alone, but I would say the the decision was made because. There is a small window of time where we will be doing this.
Right.
Um, because you would have to consider any number of things, environmental impact, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, if this were just gonna be forever and ever.
Right, so.
I believe when we started those conversations too, that there was an, I'm just, there was a goal of making a transition on July one. That there wasn't going to be.
Right. And since there isn't, is there anything being considered for our recycling? Because like I said, I refuse to throw it in hopper. I recycle for a reason.
We're still in contract with this, this other opportunity.
Okay.
And and to what Mr. White was saying, we have a, you know, they're they're contractually bound to work with us on that. So that that is what's in the works. It's not here July one, it's the challenge.
Yeah, so I'm wondering if this trailer that we need has to do with the fact that people are throwing their recycling into the hopper. I've got more recycling than I have trash. So.
The trailer is certainly gonna be used, but the trailer is something that has been patched up and patched up and patched up. Uh, for the left, for, as Jay said, at least for the better part of five years. I also would agree with the sentiment expressed or to that there perhaps was an opportunity to address that sooner. But we'll put that aside for the moment and just say that I, is the trailer being used and perhaps being used a little more extensively? Because we're not recycling? I can't answer that question except logic could kind of take you there, but I would wanna see the data.
Recycling in there, so I know there's more.
But again, even that, even from that perspective, right, that that would have been, that would know, we would have known that that was not a sustainable solution if it were just forever.
Okay.
Yep. Under solid waste, our hauling costs were thirty-six thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars. So when we took a chainsaw to the budget and then the scalpel. These were places that we looked. I mean, we were even being charged for that container, that gizmo that was sitting out there. You pay for that. You pay for all the hauling, et et cetera, that's. And then with our own trailers, we're doing, we have our own tractor to pull the trailer off to the landfill. But I'm looking right here at the budget page fifty-five, thirty-six thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars. That's where our hauling was. So we looked every place we could to make cuts. I. I'm sorry.
Hey, I'm just wondering how long I have to keep my recycling in my garage, that's all.
One thing to remember too, we would still need this trailer even when the recycling, if the recycling were open.
Okay.
Today. Regardless of how much trash is in it, we're still hauling trash in a trailer as well as the recycling piece. So both would, both exist at the same time.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Anyone else? Luke.
Where did the recycling go prior to this being shut down?
Same place as the trash.
Thank you.
I think it's a good question, a good, a good question.
How about that? Don, would you, did you hear Luke's answer? Question was asked, where does the recycling go? Goes the same place that the trash does.
Don, would you like?
It was my, it was my, uh, I'm sorry. It was my understanding from the former town manager that some of our recycling went to Lewiston. That's what I was told, down to the. And it sometimes they were out of operation and our trash went into to general.
I'm talking quietly. I think that's been the case for a while. Yep, if we can double check that.
Thank you.
Yep, that's not true.
Anyone else? All right. How would the council like to proceed?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other comments, questions? Holes in favor? Opposed. Uh, resolve twenty twenty-six dash one three approving sale of map zero one zero lot zero twenty-one dash zero two zero N. To former owners, the amount of four thousand five hundred sixty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents. And I will turn it over to the town manager.
His next two items, uh, agenda item D and agenda item D go hand in hand. Um, Mr. And Mrs. Jellerson purchased um, the property located at one ninety-seven Jacob Buck Pond Road in twenty twenty. Um, on that property sits a trailer. That is a separate parcel within our real estate um, program. At that time, that parcel should have also been transferred into the Jellerson's name. And it did not. It stayed in the former tenant's name. And so the Jellersons did not receive copies of the tax bills, copies of lien notices, copies of foreclosure notices. Uh, it was a big surprise to them when they learned that there were back taxes and. Technically in foreclosure status with the town. So what is before you this evening is um, es- essentially selling it back to them. Um, for the back tax amount on the building that's associated with that parcel. Um, it was, they were already being taxed on the acre, on the the land value on their main parcel. So this is essentially clearing up the back taxes and getting it back into their name.
And the Gellersons are ha- happy and have no.
Correct.
Yep. Questions? Are we doing these together, D and E? I, well, we, if you wouldn't mind, I'll just act on, take action on them separately, but I'll limit the conversation on E since we've had it already. Question? Uh, what's the pleasure of the council?
Second.
Holes in favor? E is resolved twenty twenty-six dash one four. As I just mentioned, we'll just take action on this. Authorizing execution of municipal quitclaim deed for map zero one zero lot zero two one dash zero two O N. It's the pleasure of the council.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion to second, holes in favor?
Opposed.
You? Uh, resolve twenty twenty-six dash one five. The police department would like. Um, more time to put together a proposal on that and um, I will ask the council to table that. It's the pleasure of the council.
Motion to table.
Second.
Questions? Holes in favor? Vote? Yep.
Do you folks think we have enough?
I can't hear you. Please come up.
Do you folks kind of think we might have enough police cruisers in Bucksport, Maine?
They're tableing this tonight.
Okay, but a table should be. A garbage. We don't need another cruiser.
No, 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 we're not, it's not going in the garbage. It'll be, it'll be brought up for discussion another night. We need more information.
Okay.
But it's, they're not, they're not adding a cruiser. It's replacing.
I know, but. They are requesting for improvement of the program for lease. That's funny. We don't have it.
I'll give you a quick summary on that and we'll talk about this more in two weeks. But our lease program for the cruisers is half the cost of when we were buying them, fronting the money.
I guess you didn't understand what I said.
It's a substantial savings.
That's the kind of comment I'm not gonna tolerate this.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm not agreeing.
I'm not gonna let, I wanna be clear. I am not letting it go down that road. I have a responsibility as the mayor of the town of Bucksport. As it's written in the town code, not to let impertinence happen in these meetings. I will not allow it.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I just say my piece?
Absolutely, ma'am.
My piece is, we do not need seven cruisers in Bucksport, Maine.
Okay.
See, what I'm saying, we have a, a sheriff's department that can help us out, just like they do it on. We have to cut up spending.
If if I may, every time we come to a council meeting, at the beginning of our packet. We have three to five pieces of information where the town of Bucksport has actually gone to assist. Either the sheriff's department or the state police.
Yeah.
The sheriff's department. The sheriff's department, I work as a volunteer firefighter in a neighboring town, I go to motor vehicle accidents. I wait for the sheriff's department to come up because they're out on another call. So, the town of Bucksport, like I say, every time we come to a meeting, we've got, and we have five sheets in here tonight. That the town of Bucksport Police are providing mutual aid to both the sheriff's department and the state police. So, I hear what you're saying, but there's also another side of this.
So, yeah, okay.
We'll get into it in a couple of weeks.
One more quick question on that, how much money do you make on these calls, the town make?
Town doesn't make a thing, it's called mutual aid.
Another town.
It's just when I, it's just when my fire department comes into the town of Bucksport.
Yeah.
Town of Bucksport doesn't pay us, we come mutual aid.
Just like your house, my house, Billy's house.
Sorry, sorry I raised my voice too.
No, that's fine, I'm used to it, I work in the mail. No, but our houses are mutual aid anyhow. With Orange in, is mine, Billy's.
Absolutely, yep, here's what I promise you, okay, I promise you that this is gonna be considered with the facts. As well as all of the finances behind it.
Yeah.
When we, when we discuss this, and the council will make a decision. I agree with you that we are not in a place to be doing irresponsible spending, so. We will consider this on its merits and on the facts, I assure you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Oh, yes.
Hi, I'm Jane, eighty-two Main Street. On the same subject, have we looked into sharing, uh, fire and police departments with surrounding towns? Which many other situ, other towns in the situation for their budgets have done the same thing. Meaning that.
Hard time.
Meaning that other towns, um, our budget, let's say for the police departments, a million dollars. We do it with all in, share the expense with other towns to cut back on the town. Have we looked into that? Instead of people being upset and dismantling the police, which I understand what you're saying, but. What they're saying is we just can't afford for us in our budget to go, and it is nice to be able to go over and help other people. Don't get me wrong, and I don't wanna see anybody lose their job, so if we just could maybe come up with some kinda. Meetings with other towns to see if they cannot share some of the financial burden of some of our departments, including the fire department. Um, you know, the coenforcement officer, tax assessor, other towns share them. It just would be better financially for us.
I'm.
Thank you.
Absolutely, yep, I'm tabling, we'll table the discussion for now. I'm sorry, I'm gonna table the discussion for now, we are, because we've already drifted off from the consideration of leasing a cruiser into. Consolidating efforts, not that I'm.
The nine-one-one system.
Excuse me?
Why don't we use the regional dispatch?
I'm tabling the discussion for now, because we're talking about a cruise, leasing a cruiser, and then. We're not talking about nine-one-one this evening. There's a, we have an agenda item coming up for just items not on the agenda. You can absolutely bring that up then. We have a motion in a second on tabling this to our, to a future meeting, I assume our next meeting. Okay, how would the council like to proceed? Excuse me, alls in favor? Opposed, thank you. Resolve twenty twenty-six dash one six approving liquor license renewal for My Buddy's Place LLC.
Just need to make an amendment to that resolve, um, the spelling of the establishment was incorrect, so it needs to be changed to. My Buddy's Place B U D D Y apostrophe S.
Correct. Any other question or comment?
And a motion to approve the license.
Yes.
Second.
With that amendment?
Yes.
Okay, question from the public? Alls in favor? Opposed, you? Uh, resolve twenty twenty-six dash one seven approving liquor license renewal for the crumpet.
Motion approved, second.
Questions? Alls in favor? Resolve twenty twenty-six dash one eight approving first time food service license for Charlie Thai sushi.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Questions? Alls in favor? Uh, resolve twenty twenty-six dash one nine, um, appointing Councilor Hare as a regular member of the Community and Economic Development Committee. Uh, folks, this is simple, um, Councilor Bishop, um, as you know, has a number of demands on his time. Um, and they're good demands, and we have Councilor Hare who has been participating in. The economic, uh, Community and Economic Development Committee meetings anyway, and so I would like to, um. It is actually a conversation that happened, a mutual conversation, and I'm in favor of. Um, moving Councilor Hare as the regular to that committee, you know, with Councilor Bishop being an alternate. Questions?
Motion approved.
Question? Alls in favor? Opposed, you? Five zero one, yep. We're getting there, folks, I promise, um. Resolve twenty twenty-six dash twenty, authorizing execution of a municipal quitclaim deed for map zero one three lot zero eight zero. That is included in your packet as well. How would the council like to proceed? Oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say that the, all of these remaining, um, agenda items are. Real estate parcels that had liens, that have matured, that the property owners have since paid off. So these are potentially housekeeping items of the council.
Any question? Folks, I'm gonna move, given what the town manager said, I'm gonna move through those, however, if you have any questions about that. That would be a great time to ask. I think the town manager explained it perfectly. Uh, so we have a motion in a second on that? Alls in favor? You? Yes, uh, resolve twenty twenty-six dash twenty-one, which is authorizing execution of a municipal quitclaim deed for map zero one eight lot zero six three. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Questions? Alls in favor? Opposed, you? Twenty twenty-six dash twenty-two authorizing execution of a municipal quitclaim deed for map zero four two lot zero two three.
Second.
Alls in favor? You? Resolve twenty twenty-six dash twenty-three authorizing execution of a municipal quitclaim deed for map zero one five lot zero six four.
Second.
Questions? Alls in favor? Opposed, you? Resolve twenty twenty-six dash twenty-four authorizing execution of a municipal quitclaim deed for map zero zero six lot zero five two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Questions? Alls in favor? You? Resolve twenty twenty-six dash two five authorizing execution of a municipal quitclaim deed for map zero one zero lot zero three five. Alls in favor? Resolve twenty twenty-six dash twenty-six authorizing execution of a municipal quitclaim deed for map zero one four lot zero four nine dash zero zero one. Motion to approve. Questions? Alls in favor? You? Only three more, result, resolve twenty twenty-six dash twenty-seven authorizing execution of a municipal quitclaim deed for map zero four three lot zero one one.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Favor? You? Resolve twenty twenty-six dash twenty-eight authorizing execution of a municipal quitclaim deed for map zero three seven lot zero zero eight.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Questions? Alls in favor? You? Uh, resolve twenty twenty-six dash twenty-nine authorizing execution of a municipal quitclaim deed for map zero one eight lot zero seven six.
Motion to approve.
Second. Alls in favor? You? Alright, so, uh, the next item on the agenda is the town manager's report. All of those I just read off, uh, we have to sign those, uh, we'll be signing those right now as the town manager is speaking. Uh, we also have his written report, if we are not completed signing these by the time we get to the next item on the agenda, which is discussion of items. Not on the agenda for council and public, um, we'll pause there so we can sign these and give our full attention to that, uh, agenda item. And with that, we will move to item ten, town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, council. Our yearly paving was completed during the week of July twenty-eighth, coming in approximately twenty thousand dollars. Under budget, following the paving, the highway crew spent the remainder of that week and much of the next week edging roadsides, both on the newly paved streets. And in other areas around town. Route one wall project is nearing completion, the only remaining work is the installation of a railing leading into the cemetery. This week, the town received its first reimbursement from the state, covering half the project cost. Highway has been working to remove the old Ian's Playground on Elm Street and prepare the site for the new installation. New playground equipment is scheduled for delivery on Wednesday, with installation anticipated around Labor Day. Finance Director Wilson and I spent most of last Thursday with the town's auditor, reviewing our current financial position, preparing for the twenty-five audit. This was a productive and informative meeting that was very helpful to both of us. Uh, our dispatch center is getting an upgrade thanks to the city of Bangor, which donated a new to us dispatch console. Uh, our IT Department, Facilities Director and Public Safety Staff have been busy coordinating that transition. And with the exception of staff time, this upgrade is being completed at nearly no cost to the town. Uh, Main Water has increased its contribution to the Courtesy Boat Inspection Program by an additional twenty-five hundred dollars. Bringing their total donation to four thousand dollars for this year. Uh, while discussions on the program's long-term sustainability and funding model will be necessary in the months ahead. This con- contribution will allow the program to operate through Labor Day as planned. The only other thing that I had that's not in my report, uh, is that the council needs to decide on dedications for the twenty-five. Twenty-four and twenty-five annual reports, so if you can be thinking about that, I can certainly have that as a discussion item on your next agenda.
Please do, yes. Um, as you will see, we are still signing, um, those quitclaim deeds. And as I mentioned, I wanna make sure that for the next item on the agenda, we are giving, um, both. Other members of the council as well as the public with full attention, um, it's eight o'clock as well, so as we move through those. It should take, I would guess about five minutes, um, we'll just take a quick break, we're still gonna be televised, I don't think we were at a place where we can just turn the TVs off. So, um, I will just, same rules apply, um, in terms of conversation and things like that. Uh, but other than that, um, we'll take five minutes and the, if you're unfamiliar, there are restrooms around the corner. I figured there might be at least one or two people that would want to use the restroom.
If there, there's an order and it's messed up, it's rolling.
Yeah, it's already out of order.
We'll get there.
Give me your comments, it's about civility. There's been enough of the opposite. Don't need this anymore tonight. It's, it is, um, it's just the, the work that was done to rebuild.
I would see a my house every ten years, one showed up. And I miss him. No. But I've always. Yeah, no, no, no. No, my Sarah was. Don't, I mean, yeah, she almost died, so anyway, yeah, yeah, um, but, um. Six-month-old baby. Big dispose sentence, month sentences, I probably. I've always, uh, I wasn't wrapped up in having some until I found out. So this gentleman's bad. I know, I try to live with myself.
Dry in here.
Yep.
If he's the last one, I can keep track of him, I just don't wanna skip anyone else.
Before, do we have, just, I wish I'd done a better job keeping track of who left them, do we have everyone back? Is there anyone that you can identify that we're missing? Okay, alright, um, next item on the agenda, yeah, is discussion of items not on the agenda for council and public. I wanna, normally I try at all times to speak fast, I'm gonna say a couple of things first, um, that I want to own. The first is. Where this lies in the agenda. This, this I, agenda item is in, at the place in the meeting that it usually is, we could have moved it, and I made the decision not to. The reason I did that is because there's been a lot of discussion in the community about. What happens at these meetings, and what's discussed at these meetings, and how these meetings go. I promise you this, I do hope there are more people at these meetings, I promise you that. And so I decided, and it was my decision to. There are a lot of people here tonight that are seeing how the council conducts its business. No mystery, I don't want there to be any mystery, I want there to be full transparency, so I made that decision. The second thing I wanna take ownership for, I normally wouldn't do this, but I'm going to, there's been discussion on, in the community that I've been made aware of. About the circumstances of canceling the meeting on July the twenty-fourth, when it was so close to tax bills being sent out. I am going to own that, and I am going to tell you with one hundred percent transparency why that meeting was canceled. The week prior to that meeting, I had. The week prior to that meeting, I had a meeting with town manager and our deputy mayor on, on another topic. Um, and I'm, I was on vacation at the time. I had asked for that meeting, so I'd come in to, back to town for that meeting. Um, I have two children celebrating, who are celebrating milestone birthday, oh, actually, all three, but I have two children who have birthdays six days apart in July, twenty-first and twenty-seventh. My daughter does not want me broadcasting her age. My son turn, he, she's the older of the two. My so, and I had a son turning twenty-one. They, I'm gonna bore you with the details, but we're gonna, because we are gonna deal with it, we are gonna deal with facts and truth moving forward. Because there's been discussion that this council, this council has, was behaving cowardly. And not, I can assure you of there's not a lot of thing. I'm not a gambling man, and I, and I'm not here, I'm not grandstanding here when I say this. This council's not afraid to a- address any member of the public on any conversation. And if you've attended meetings with any regularity in the past, you know, already know that to be true. Like, my two children were celebrating milestone birthdays traditionally since they were young. They have celebrated their birthdays together, and they enjoy doing so. The day they could get together was the twenty-fourth. Normally, I would have looked for another day, but we also only had one other item on the agenda. So I don't want to make more of this than what it was, but it, it has also been talked of how much money sp- specifically I make as being mayor of the council. I made one thousand six hundred and twenty dollars last year, and I'm the highest-paid member of the Bucksport Town Council. So if you, if you do want to, if, if anybody's telling you I make six figures, if you count the two zeros after the decimal point, then I guess we can do that. So there was that issue. The final issue is that for this council to take action on any item, regardless of how many people are sitting here, four people have to approve it. So if there's seven of us here, if there's four of us here, it doesn't pass unless four people vote to approve it. I had the potential to be away because of my children's birthday. There was another counselor that had, was away for a, a she was helping a family member with a, uh, medical issue that she had talked to me about. There was still snow on the ground when that happened. That is, all of those things combined are why, and then, uh, so once I d- decided there probably didn't make sense to have a meeting for one agenda item, and yes, quite frankly, it worked for my children, and yes, it didn't put the council in a position of only i- if one other person had gotten sick, then there'd be four people here, and if you vote against something, i- i- it's problematic. Yes, I've over explained this. But now you all know why that meeting was canceled. And it was no, for no other reason. Now I'm gonna take a drink of water. And I'm not in trouble with my oldest daughter, uh, for indul- for divulging her age. Um, okay, enough about me. Discussion of items not on the agenda for the council and the public. We are gonna open it up to the public this evening. I'm sure there will be a number of hands. I act, I see your hand, I, uh, but there was a, a woman who had something to say earlier. I cut her off when we tabled something. I'd like her, her to have the opportunity to go first. Ma'am, if you would, would my come here?
Hi, I was wondering, um, town ever think about going to the nine-one-one regional dispatch rather than hiring four dispatchers and having to have an office and all that for them? I work for the DA's office, Bangor PD, and they went through the regional dispatches because the technology from the regional dispatch is a lot better than what you're gonna have just in a town. Plus, it's cheaper to have regional dispatch than it is to have four dispatchers. Do you ever think about that, to save money for this town?
I, I have a thought on it, but questions like this is what we're gonna have to start looking at with many residents' input.
Right.
Cause every time this is brought, been brought up before, it's absolutely not. They don't know us. We, they want our own dispatch.
It's a lot bet- that technology is a lot better at county level than it is in a town level. You know that.
It very well may be, but this is, these are discussions we really need to start having because every, you know, this, this has been brought up many times.
To answer your question, sh- succinctly, yes, it has been something that's been discussed before.
And you say that you need two police officers on duty at the same time. That's a Bucksport thing, right? You need two on, why do you need seven cars? You only have two people on duty at the same time.
Well, they're not all patrol vehicles. That, that, like the
Well, does it matter? I mean, you only have two people on duty. Why do you need seven cars? I went by the other day. There's four of them just sitting there.
The ACO has their car, the animal control officer.
Why does he have a cat? Or she, or whatever.
Because she gets called at two in the morning, three in the morning to deal with animal control complaints.
And bringing animals in. We can't have them put it in their own vehicle.
Okay, so what about the rest of the cats that are just sitting there?
I'll go through it. I'll take care of that. Um, we have a public safety director. He lives in Bucksport. And he takes his car home.
Why?
Because if he gets called at two o'clock in the morning, he's loaded with fire gear, police gear, everything he needs to do.
Bring his cat to the, you can't drive his cat to the police station?
I'm gonna say this one more time.
What?
Counselors are not interrupted. That is in the town code.
Okay.
Okay.
Steve, please finish your thought. So I used to be on the police department, and we used to do that if it was safe enough for us to have time to do that. And we had wound up taking our personal vehicles to people's houses, and sometimes those vehicles would be left on the side of the road and at those houses for six, seven, eight hours. And, uh, that was, that was not good. That wasn't good for any of us. Wasn't good for the way the rumors spread. It wasn't good. It wasn't real. So if you're gonna take your car, a police car, to a scene, if you're gonna get issued a
I don't mean to obscene, I mean just to the police department.
If you live on the Millville Road, and I'm the police officer out on forty-six that needs assistance right now, I would really like to have that ten minutes of not getting my butt kicked to get somebody there sooner. And that's, that's the reality. By the time someone drives from Millville to town to get a car and heads out forty-six.
Yeah, I understand a couple extra ones, but do you need four of them sitting there?
Those are all issued to the people that are on call, and at this present time, the people that we have on call, we're fortunate enough to have them live in the town of Bucksport.
Okay. Oh, I do have another question.
Please.
Last week, my neighbor was here, and he asked about the nine million, five hundred thousand dollars that, and nobody here had an answer, said, "We don't know what he's talking about." Are we in debt in this town for nine million, five hundred and some odd thousand dollars?
That amount is on the tax bill, and what that equates to is all of the town's debt across all departments.
Right.
That's the, um, the sewer treatment plant, the CSO building, road bond, the tax anticipation note, it's all of the loans that we have on all of our vehicles. It's everything added together.
So that means that
Equals that amount.
The tax money that we're bringing in is gonna pay that down.
Correct.
Okay.
We have debt payments just correct.
And there is a portion of that that was taxed, that was approved at referendum. The council's only authorized to spend up to three hundred thousand dollars, uh, so, just so that we're clear. For example, the, the sewer treatment plant, that was approved at referendum, for example. That includes that.
I was just wondering what that meant.
Yeah, sure.
They got one-bedroom ranch all around, ten miles from town. Value of my house went up seventy-eight thousand dollars. A one-bedroom ranch. People in town have beautiful houses. Their taxes are less than mine. Why?
I can't s- I would have to look at individual tax bills. I
I think you need to, because this is ridiculous. Our neighbor, we have two old people who live next to us, and their taxes went up to seventy-three hundred dollars, and they have a one-bedroom ranch. You'd expect people instead of social security, people to afford this. We have a widow down the street lost her husband. She's gonna have to sell her house. Can you do something about this for these four people? I think that's why we're all here.
Sure.
Thank you.
I th- thank you. I promised this, this lady here, and then I believe you're the next hand I see. Absolutely.
Hi, I'm, uh, Katrina Bissheimer.
Is that was your name? I didn't
I live out on Town Farm Road, uh, one ninety-two Town Farm Road. And I wanted to thank the council for all the work I know that you guys have done. I, I've, I've seen it. I've, I've lived it. Um, and, uh, especially the work around the old landfill. Um, and I guess my, um, reason for, uh, coming up is that I went to the transfer station. I'm, I diligently recycle, and when I couldn't recycle, I was like, ah. Um, and so I'm, I'm with the lady who was up here earlier in terms of storing my recycling, and I think it's, it's, it, it's important because it's, it's what we leave the future. I mean, it's, it's part of, it's so important. I mean, the state of Maine has their laws around recycling, reduce, reuse, recycle, and then landfill, and we're skipping the recycling and we're doing landfilling. And to me, that just seems wrong. Um, and I'm, uh, so I appreciate anything that we can do to move this forward in terms of trying to push for some sort of recycling. Um, so that's all I want to say, and I want to thank you guys for, uh, all the work that you do. Thank you.
Sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Then, then you, yeah. Council people again.
Yeah.
City of Bucksport, thank you guys for, for, uh, letting me do this. Um, we heard a couple of things earlier about some members of council not reading through an entire bill prior to voting for it. I, on the record, I, I know you, you excused the not reading and, and we can all stipulate that part. Is that the general practice of the council, though, to not read through an entire bill prior to voting on it? I use this as an example, not specifically the trailer.
I didn't say bill. It's, the hundred and sixteen is the whole.
PDF.
A lot of it is
Sure, but everything, every word in there means, every word means something. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you and Here's my sense on it. Obviously, I don't poll council members and say, "Hey, did you read this?" This is what I will say about the, the council in general. Uh, this council, I've been on the council since twenty nineteen. Um, there have been a number of faces up here. Um, I believe that this council, particularly this one sitting, does a very, very good job at showing up to meetings, being informed. Now, for example, what's included in that report i- i- in the, in the packet is the ridership report. So Down East Transportation will, will give us a report of every stop that the bus makes. Now, I look over that, um, to make sure, cause I, my, these guys will tell you, I, I love budget, I love trends, so I kinda wanna see how that ridership is going. Now, if you ask me, do I know where the, the, the bus stopped on, at every stop? No. But, but, okay, yep, but I just wanna be clear. I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on it. Um, I, I have never had a concern in my time as mayor, and I don't know that I've ever had a concern even before I was mayor with councils showing up to meetings uninformed or having not, uh, prepared, um, ahead of time. Okay, and, and to clarify, you said your six, your salary was sixteen hundred Twenty dollars. In twenty dollars? I guess it's sixty dollars a meeting, so next year it might be different depending on the number of meetings, but yeah. We'll call another meeting. Maybe get something extra for the birthday party, and I empathize with the situation with the birthdays for sure. Uh, but that's sixteen hundred and twenty dollars of Bucksport taxpayer money. Is that correct? Yes. And, and again, while I certainly empathize with the situation, it is these, the situation that you desired to put yourself in? You ran for mayor? I ran to be on the council, and then the council elects a mayor. Okay. Yep. So you volunteered and, and subsequently were elected? Yes. Okay. So whether, when I was a kid, I was told whether it's stealing a penny or stealing a dollar, and, and no, no accusations there, just please, it's a old adage, it didn't matter. So whether we are spending sixteen hundred dollars or we're spending a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, that should not matter. So every bill, every bus stop, as, as you say, should be scrutinized. Is that a fair assertion?
Please.
Sir, also, departments within our town have supervisor, we have a hierarchy supervisory structure. And so council's role is, is sort of, um, eh, financial oversight. But there's a system within the town personnel of scrutinizing the minutia of each employee's work. It's not our lane to sort of say, this bus stop shouldn't be stopping there. We're sort of overseeing big picture, and so that exam, just to pull that example out, that, that report is, is overseen by a supervisory structure within the town employees.
Of course, um, but we presented an example earlier of a, of a item that had been on the agenda for, you said Tuesday, so two days, that you, you guys knew, or Tuesday last week, so nine days. None. No, let, let me make sure that we're clear, cause now I think I understand the question you were asking before. This agenda was published on Tuesday, uh, of this week. Correct. Um, the information around the trailer was included in that packet that we were sent on Tuesday. Right. I did not hear anyone here say, and if anyone here wants to correct me if I'm wrong, please do. I did not hear anyone say that they had not had an opportunity to read e- through either the packet or that particular item. Stipulated, so we know, we all know in a given degree that it was on the agenda. Yes. Yet when we asked financial questions about it, as the gentleman in the back did, we didn't have an answer. We have no numbers, and you guys also stipulated that you are in direct control of every dollar that comes into this city. Is that correct? What answer, what, I probably, just as a point of clarification, not to be nitpicking, not a city, we're a town. But what part, what financial question didn't we have an answer to? Uh, can we do it cheaper than twelve dollars and fifty-one cents per? And then it was rebutted and asked, how much does it cost? That was not included in the packet, nor was that, I would have to say that was not an anticipated item of discussion. Mr. Mayor, that's understood. However, you guys all stipulated that you were responsible for every dollar. Right? So how do you not know where every dollar goes? You've already answered that you don't know where every dollar goes.
Off the top of my head.
I disagree with that. I, I di- I di- I disagree with that. You're, the, the question that was asked was, if we knew based on what was sp- yeah, if you're asking whether we have memorized the budget, which I believe is what you're asking, because the question was, do, if we knew what was budgeted for, if we take what was budgeted and divided that by household, by week, if, if the expectation is that if that was gonna be a topic of conversation this evening, we would have had that, but that's not the topic of conversation. The topic of conversation was, are we gonna replace the trailer? I'm not being argumentative. Yeah, nope, I digress. Um, Mr. Mr. Grant, um, in FY twenty-four, how much was the revenue sharing fund that we received from the state of Maine?
They don't have that numbers in front of me specifically.
Mr. Grant, in FY twenty-five, how much did we receive from the state of Maine in the revenue sharing fund?
Roughly eight hundred and
Roughly?
Fifty thousand dollars.
So less.
I don't have the specific
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you right here, cause I, I, I'm picking up Yeah, I was argumentative. I, I understand. No, no, I actually, that's not what I'm gonna say. No, 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 I'm, I don't think you're being argumentative, but I think you're trying to make a point. I am. I think you're trying to make a point that we don't have a handle on the budget. I do. Okay. We can debate that, but I think what you, here's, here's what I would say. If you were really interested in getting to those numbers, if you were really interested in, in seeing, you, there are a number of ways you could have asked that question. You could have, you could have called the town office the day before yesterday and said, "Mr. Town Manager, uh, hey, can, what was the revenue sharing? We could have gotten those numbers for you." I think it is an unrealistic expectation for you, for there to be an assumption that we have down to the decimal point, every number in this budget memorized. Mr. Mayor, you diatribe'd for six minutes and twenty-five seconds earlier, understanding what this meeting was going to be about. Okay. Is that correct? You probably have the time in front of you. I wouldn't count it, I wouldn't call it a diatribe, but, but, but we'll, we'll let that slide. One person talking, um, were these questions not expected to be asked? Or hoped not to ask?
Sir, have, have you been, me ask you a question?
Of course, please. Please.
Have you been to council meeting? Is this your first council meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
So, um, at council meetings, sometimes citizens will bring an idea, like, um, I've forgotten your name, ma'am. Uh, um, you mentioned the dispatch, um, and some other ideas have been brought to council. So fu- when you bring an idea to the table, we do our due diligence and consider those ideas. It's not realistic that we would have an answer to your idea tonight. And the gentleman's idea about twelve dollars and sixty cents per house, twelve fifty per household, it's an idea that we would be committed to looking at, is what, is what I heard Mr. Mayor to say, so we, we can't, um, we can sort of have a sense of how we can articulate and explain our budget decisions that we've already made, but we can't crystal ball which taxpayers going to wanna go down which road for cost-saving ideas. And so this is a great opportunity for you to bring the idea to the table, but you And so this is a great opportunity for you to bring the idea to the table, but you may not get a resolution or a solution tonight. Um and that's just the process of council meetings.
Understood, uh fair enough, and and I only use the twelve fifty as an example of the. Agenda items and knowing what's on the agenda and knowing what we're gonna talk about at open comment. As.
We're gonna have to disagree on something.
I've, I'm happy to disagree with you, Mr. Mayor, I just want it publicly spoken.
That we're disagreeing?
That there is a misunderstanding of where all of Bucksport's town money is going.
Uh that that is, that is certainly not true.
Again, we're agreed to disagree.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council people, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
I'll be fast.
What's, what is the town ex- the tax successor? He doesn't live in Bucksport. Where does he live? And no, no, the town manager, he, where do you live?
I live in Winterport.
What is your taxes in Winterport?
But are they in Winterport?
For your house.
I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Okay, alright, but is there a, was there a rule that you had to hire a town manager, he had to come from Bucksport? In the past?
Should be that way.
No.
I mean, I can't, I I I don't, I, in the, in my time on the council, there is not been that rule.
Okay, and then the tax successor, was there a rule about that, that he had to be living the town too? No?
No, so we're in compliance with all of our hiring practices.
Okay, alright, I'm done.
Okay.
Two previous town managers came from afar.
Yep.
So.
I saw Mrs. Dunbar saying it, then, yep.
But to be on council, you must be a resident of Bucksport.
Yes, counselors have to be a resident of the town.
Okay.
Thank you for letting us all speak, I'll try to be quick. I don't know, everybody knows I'm, uh Frank Dunbar was a counselor here for, since in the seventies when they went from the uh. Um select man to the council, so he's been gone almost four years. Uh I just had a question, that's his tax, and it would be my daughter Molly that passed away two years ago. Um it's a very old trailer, nineteen seventy eight or two, somewhere around that. It was, she paid, um, I thought she paid ten, ten or eleven thousand, which was too much at the time. And when she was sick and dying, um it froze up three times that winter. And so it wasn't worth very much, but my older daughters, her daughter's living there now. And they put a little addition on, it was a twelve by sixteen. And it costs five thousand dollars and they evaluate it now at that addition at twenty five thousand. And the old trailer, they now evaluate it at sixty thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, and it's almost fifty years old. And it really, my granddaughter has made it look nice, but it really is not that solid. It could have been hauled off when she took it over, she went underneath it and did all the insulation, bless her heart. And they've made it look quite nice, and the only outbuilding is a um, one of my other grandsons' ice shack. On skids, they made a little um tool chat out of it, so I just thought sixty thousand is a little bit, and it doubled the taxes. And it's not the land at all, it's just a trailer, so thank you very much.
So it's like eighty-five, Jackie, between the addition and the trailer, or is it sixty-five total?
Sixty thousand seven hundred and fifty for just the trailer, not the land, cause it lands just on, on mine still. So, it had gone up quite a bit, I thought, maybe she should sell it, somebody wants to pay sixty for that. Okay, thank you very much.
I I saw the lady behind you and then, yep. Oh, there we go. You said your name earlier, it was Jane.
Jane, right, eighty-two Main Street. Um I went in to see um the town manager earlier because I'm behind in my taxes, I'm from last year, I don't care who knows it. I'm been ill again. So, um and before when I was ill and went behind in my taxes, of course, I didn't expect the tax bill that I got astronomical. Hike in it to begin with this year, but um I before had a um talk and. She waived my late fees and my interest and. That is the town that can, I don't know why the town is putting interest on anyone being late, especially now that the taxes have gone foolish. But I made a commitment to make and I came in, I told him I could do seven hundred dollars a month until I get caught up. If he could freeze my interest and um waive my fees. And um because I like to pay by monthly, it's just easier for me instead of coming up with a lump sum every six months. And he said that he was uncomfortable doing it, and he felt that if he did it for me, he'd have to do it for everybody, which should be anyway, but. I would like the town council to agree to do that, so I can make payments, I said I can make seven hundred, sometimes it's more than seven hundred. But seven hundred I can afford, you know, even if I get sick again, so. Till I get caught up and then it will go down to whatever I need to pay, but hopefully we have the taxes fixed by then, I won't have to pay so much, but. Anyway, if the fees and interest continue on, I'll never get caught up, especially with the huge amount of increase in my taxes now. So if you all could agree to do that, I would appreciate it. I still, m- my understand, I I don't understand why the town charges interest on people who are late. Because if they're late, they're having trouble paying their taxes as it is. Um and with this huge tax hike, I mean, half the seniors here are not gonna be able to afford. They're, obviously their homes as it is, they're gonna have to, and to put on fees and late fees and interest, it's just gonna hurt them even more. So waive mine would be great. And I had said I could do seven hundred dollars a month, if sometimes more until I get caught up. It's to my benefit to get caught up as quick as possible, but if I get sick again, I I can't, I can only guarantee the seven hundred.
Certainly not taking action on your tax bill this evening, what I would say. And I'm just one member of this council, yep, I've got the title mayor, that's just to run these meetings for the most part. So please, I, that's why, but I, anytime you attach that title, that's why I try to speak last. But here's what I'm gonna say, I think if we're gonna do that, we need to do it for everyone.
Absolutely.
I'm not ruling it out.
All for it.
I'm not ruling it out, but I want, I wanna do, I I wanna do that based on data and facts.
What would be the data and facts?
The data and facts would be how many people are behind, what the, what the loss of revenue to the town of Bucksport would be. I just wanna know what, I would wanna know what the impact of that decision would be. I'm certain that you're not suggesting that we would make an ill-informed decision.
No, how would there be a loss of revenue to the town?
Because presently, per state law, we charge interest when uh taxes come in after the due date.
And I have no idea what ti- and I'm sure it wasn't you folks, what town council ever passed that rule, that's. And why would you punish the people that made the town, we're all investors here?
Okay.
When they're behind, most of the time it is due to a crisis, job loss, sickness. People don't just be negligent, especially people who have invested in the town for years.
I'm not saying any of those things.
So to charge them interest so that, and and fees, they'll never get caught up.
Okay, what, but what I would, I as one person would want to know, what the impact of that is. We had a gentleman who just walked out of here, trying to insinuate that this council doesn't know what it's doing, because we don't, and I'm not putting that on you, let me be clear. Yep, I would, I want to know the financial impact of every decision we make. So I would wanna know, okay, how much is owed in back taxes, how much is owed, if that were paid today, what would the interest payments be, what are the additional fees? Because. It puts our town manager in in the role of having to make decisions on a case-by-case basis, and I think if we're all being reasonable here. We would have to say that that's, that's not equitable.
I don't think it should have have been, been part of it at all, I've never taken out a loan, the town never loaned me any money. So for, and it's just my civil duty to pay on my property taxes, which supports the town. But also it's the town council that makes some of these major decisions. That perhaps maybe they weren't aware of the impact and the town council changes, so I'm, I'm nowhere blaming anybody here. On the consequences of the walls that, uh the walls, everything that's been done to the town. That money could have been put aside to offset and we wouldn't be in debt.
I'm simply saying this, I would want the, the taxpayers, this council, everyone to know. What the financial impact of that decision would be before we made it, that's it. Not, I'm not saying that I disagree with you, I'm not saying that I agree with you, I'm saying that I would want this council and the taxpayers at large. To know what the financial impact of that decision would be, that's all.
Because also on the other fact is that you might have to have some people go to pay their taxes now that they've gone up astronomically. On a month-to-month basis, well, by doing that, you might not be right up to. You get a bill for a thousand dollars, you might not be right up to that bill, doing it month-to-month instead of coming in two times a year. Well, then they're gonna accrue interest on if they're late. With their six months, if they're not, because by the end of the year, if you've paid your taxes. It, you shouldn't be, you start to accrue interest six months, within six months, if you haven't come up with that amount of money on whatever you owe. So you might end up accruing interest on that, where you could benefit some people by giving them the option. If you waive the interest fees on doing a month-to-month. Paying their, on their property taxes, and the water and sewer as well, of course, cause that went up thirty-one dollars as well, thank you.
Absolutely. Oh, forgive me, yes, sorry.
Evening, everyone, my name is Donald Jewett, and I live in Bucksport, I've lived here for a lot of years. So I've got quite a few things I wanted to go over tonight, and I don't wanna take everyone's time too long, but. Uh there's a one thousand two hundred and twenty-nine seniors thereabouts, if we're all still here tonight, and there's a lot of senior citizens here. And we're on an income where we really just can't afford this big rise in interest rate and and ta- uh taxes. And we didn't even know about it till I got our tax bill. My wife and I have a little cabin on Thurston Pond with no services whatsoever, we have a home. On Bucks Mills and we have another piece of property, and our payment for taxes is twelve hundred plus dollars every single month. With our new tax bill, it's just, I said, older folks can't afford this, it's ridiculous. Now, this lady was talking about the interest, we've always paid our taxes on time. This year, we're gonna have to borrow money from the town and pay your interest rate, cause we can't afford it. Right before the lien goes on, I hope that we're gonna be able to pay off, so we can keep it out of the lien. But it's ridiculous, we've worked hard all our lives for everything we have, in this hot weather, I've been out working every day. So I can pay my taxes, it's ridiculous, that we are about to lose what we worked so hard for. Just because we lost the mill and we haven't. Uh adjusted to that, the mill was forty-some percent of our tax. So we had been overtaxed long enough so that we had this buffer, and we've been spending it down, is my understanding, now that I've got this tax bill, I've been doing a little research. So now, as the the gentleman, Mr. Smith, the the says, the rubber meets the road this year. Now we have to decide, are we gonna start living up to our means, like we have to. Our means are getting a lot shorter, thanks to the town, the town has to cut. The federal government's cutting, the state's cutting, everyone's cutting, I'm cutting, it's time Bucksport cuts. I feel just as safe with five offices, seven offices, as I do eleven offices. I agree with the gentleman, we have way too many cruises, I sympathize that we need the cruises at these people's houses so that they have a go in emergencies in the middle of night. I see, when I read the enterprise, I really don't see that many crimes where we need emergencies. We have ambulance services, we have the fire department, we have all these people that are on duty all the time to handle these emergencies. A deer, the accident, or fender bender, I mean, what is a big crime? I really, I really don't know if we've had a real big crime this last year, that where we need eleven police officers. Uh so anyway, that's one gripe I have, another gripe I have, and I don't know if anything we can do about this particular problem. But all the people that vote in town and vote for all this expenditure. They are voting, and they may not even be landowners, they may not be property owners, but they still have the vote, which I understand. But they're voting to spend all this money that we have to come up with, because they're renters or or not, or they may be. On the state, who knows, but they all have their vote and they're all spending our money. And I think it's, should be, if we're gonna spend for these big projects, like this Bucksport Beautiful, one million dollars. Our share, whoever is doing this, to find all this money where we have to spend a million dollars to possibly get nine million. Please stop, it's killing us, we don't have that million, we can't spend Bucksport Beautiful, Bucksport's beautiful enough. We have the river, we have the Riverwalk, we have a lot of beauty, we don't need a Bucksport Beautiful. And if the state and federal don't come up with the money, we've gotta come up with another nine million dollars.
That's not.
That's not true?
That's not true.
Okay.
This is a, this is a DOT project.
Okay.
And and also there's federal funding, so I'm I'm not gonna go down any rabbit holes, cause I know it's getting late. But I, but, and we can provide much more information than what I'm about to say.
Okay.
But you're, so basically, let's use round numbers, it was, uh let's say it's a ten million dollar project, for which the federal government pays. The federal and the state pay nine million, the the uh the town, um and the voters approve the one million. If that funding doesn't happen, then the the that project, there's, we're not gonna be be taking on the remainder to make that project happen. Well, there's been talk about the the fact that the DOT is here, um doing some of the prep work for that project. That is the DOT doing that, that is the main DOT doing that, that is not the town of Bucksport doing that. Um who know, I I'm with you, uh if the federal funding doesn't happen, then. We'll have to consider o- other alternatives in terms of just the regular upkeep and and paving of Main Street.
Okay, well, that seems fair enough, I I was concerned, I thought perhaps, that we were gonna go ahead with all these projects and then we'll just wait for the government.
I'm glad you asked the question.
So that's not true, okay, well, that's good then, uh but anyways, I really do think that, you know, um. Our taxes are just going up, up, up completely out of control, and we just have to. Across the board, I think forty percent, and that's what we're spending, we don't have, and we've gotta get back to there. Now, I don't care how many people get hurt, I'm, I do care, honestly, I'm sorry I said that, I didn't mean that, I do care, and it's not popular to cut people's jobs. It's not popular to cut these programs, but as I go through this, this budget, it's just mind-boggling. This is what we're looking at, folks, for Bucksport, all this money, everyone has, every department has office expenses. I mean, can we all buy paper clips and divide them up, instead of everyone having all these expenses? Every individual department has it. It's ridiculous, uh office supplies, uh here's this one, this is seven thousand dollars for office supplies. This, this is just the general government one, and every one of them has one, I mean, I haven't had time to go through this, cause I've been working. But I would, if, next meeting, perhaps I will come back and be a little more informed and a little bit better of what I'm. Wanting to tell you folks, but what I'm trying to say is, please, let's just try to cut forty percent, okay? Thank you for your time.
Because he did a great segue for me.
Just a moment. I know I'm not winning any popularity points this evening with reminders about the town code, and I'm gonna own this last one because I didn't say it. It is also in the town code that. I believe I mentioned the feet stomping, it is also in the town code that applause and things like that. Um around this type of thing, uh it it. Just gonna leave it at that, I'm really just trying to do what the town, to do what the town code calls for, that's, I promise you, that's all. Anyway, um I'm sorry, I, there was somebody, oh, Paul, I apologize, but then there was someone else.
Okay.
Yep, I'm keeping track of the hands.
I'm gonna go out of sequence here, but I wanna follow up with what this gentleman had to say, first off. As you can tell by my white hair, I'm one of these seniors that he's talking about. I know my numbers, twenty-four point seven percent of the population of the town of Bucksport are seniors. And to those that have already spoken, yes, there are seniors right now that are underwater with their taxes and they're about to drown. Because of this, there's, there's no lie about that. I will share with you, I live in East Bucksport, you can go online any day you want, look up my name, and you'll find all my tax. Information, okay? And I don't have any water lines in front of my house, I don't have any fire hydrants, I don't have any sidewalks. I don't have the street sweeper coming down my street, every, I don't, that's not why I moved out to East Bucksport, okay? But this year, the, the taxes. Are number one with the mill rate, we were gonna go up seventeen percent. And I was just as shocked as the rest of you, it's my circus. I'm taking this as a ringmaster because it hurts me too, that my additional assessment. Was another sixty six thousand dollars on my home and I don't live in a palace. And it became a thirty three percent increase in taxes and my taxes went up. Two thousand eighty five dollars to eighty three hundred and five dollars, that's where my current tax bill is. So I get it, but what bugs me the most about the way this was done. Was the fact that the, I'm gonna blame it on the assessor, maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm right. But there was no document that came out or, or anything published on our website that says, this is where we're going and why. And there was nothing in a letter form that came out to us and said, this is where we're going and why, okay? And then to get this shock like we all did, that was rather disturbing to me and, and so forth. And it, it just could have been handled way better, as far as I'm concerned, I get it. And the reason I get it, our tax bill this year is made up of three components. What we paid to the county went up another forty thousand dollars, okay? That's, that's the way it is, the municipal side of things, which we. Uh, Councilwoman Jen and I became new council members in January. Mayor Bissonette was reelected and he came back on board in January too, since we immediately. Got right into budget season again, at the beginning of budget season. All of the managers of the department, we started out at eleven percent, we were gonna increase taxes. Thanks to the work of the men and women of the department, the department heads, working with the town manager and so forth. That number got down to just under six percent, eleven percent down to six percent. I was on council ten years ago, the largest general government expense we have is insurance and benefits. Back in two thousand and fifteen. And that includes liability insurance, public officials liability, social security, life insurance, main state requirement. All this stuff that we have to pay by law to our employees. Back then was nine hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars, you know what it is today? One million nine hundred and sixty two thousand dollars is what we have to pay out for that stuff right now. The, um, still on the municipal side, all of the department heads, they didn't take a chainsaw, they took a chainsaw, they took a scalpel. And they got our tax, the, the increase down to about six, they, they did an outstanding job, to be quite honest with. Ju- just like the supplies they put on the ambulance, the, the, the equipment they have to put in the police cruisers, et cetera. I understand where you're coming from, I'm willing to listen, I want you to come forward, all of you. I get where the taxes are, but come forward with ideas, legitimate ideas that we can try and implement to get this down. The school budget, oh my god, is this a hot budget? Remember seeing these, these were mailed or put in everyone's mailbox, okay? And back then, it was clearly announced. That the school budget meeting was gonna be held at the Performing Arts Center on May twenty first at seven P M. And then there'd be a budget validation vote that would come in after that, okay? If you put all four towns together for the R S U of Prospect, Verona Island. Um, Orland and Bucksport, the total population is about eight hundred, uh, eight thousand five hundred people. The night of the budget meet, meeting, again, Councilwoman Jen and I went to the meeting as private citizens. And you know how many people showed up at the Performance Center? Thirty plus. The proposed total budget for the R S U, nineteen million nine hundred seventy nine thousand dollars, a six point five seven percent increase. There were twenty articles on the budget that night. Thirty people went through twenty articles in thirty minutes. And approved almost a twenty million dollar budget, the overall budget increase was one point two three. One, one million two hundred thirty two thousand dollars. And the reason for that, reason for the increase in this budget. Local debt due to voter approved capital improvement projects, back to your point. We've been approving this stuff, okay? But imagine twenty million dollars in thirty minutes by thirty people, what the hell's the matter with us? So now, we move over, so all that combines and that's where we end up with our, our new tax rate. And it gets better, folks, because the retaining walls, okay, let's take a look at the retaining walls. In the packet tonight, there's a spreadsheet, goes back and defines the retaining walls. First set, put in twenty twenty one, second set, twenty twenty three, third set, twenty twenty four. You know how much all those retaining walls cost, the town of Bucksport? Six hundred and ninety six thousand dollars. Everybody going all silly because, oh, the state's gonna pay half and we're gonna pay the other half. Well, yeah, we have to pay the other half. It's, it's, and then there's the village partnership that's coming along, again, to what this gentleman. The voters, let me start again, the voters approved borrowing up to one point two million dollars in twenty twenty three. The voters, not the town council, the voters. For the application of village partnership, initiative to implement the safety and accessibility plan. The, um, that's developed by the grant, the overall cost is gonna be ten million dollars improvement downtown area. From the bridge to the mill site, town's gonna be responsible for ten percent. Well, as of Monday of this week, the town's portion is eight hundred ninety one thousand six hundred dollars and growing. Yeah, wow. A week ago, this gentleman here, when I read the information about the school budget, all he said was, wow. That's, that's, that's the amazing stuff, we're spending like crazy. We, the voters, and there's only one word for it, and it's not stupidity, it's complacency. We're just, now, how do we get around this? I think one of the reasons that we're getting down this road is because of the distance between where we spend our money. Twenty one, twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, when Roger Raymond was here as town manager. He would put out a newsletter, a flyer, people tell me, that once a quarter. Once a half, whatever, he'd give people an update is where the money was being spent, what the status of the projects were. How much money we got left, how much money is left in the rainy day fund. I mean, there's ways to get around this, folks, okay? And there are creative ways, we can do things like the private sector does. We should be leasing all, in my opinion, we should be leasing all of our vehicles, not just police cruisers. Dump trucks, front end loaders, whatever it takes, fire trucks, ambulances. You can, you can, you can get a lease on an ambulance for seven years, you can get a lease on a fire truck for fifteen. In a couple of years, our fire chief in the back is gonna be looking at almost two million dollars of replacement equipment. We gotta find a creative way to find all, to fund all this stuff. Uh, I'm sorry I raised my voice at you, but goddamn, we gotta get our act together. So I get it, the taxes went up, but I can, I can account for every dollar practically where it went up. So come up here, I want to listen, I know where our taxes are, I know we got seniors underwater. But give us some ideas, I'm not, I'm not sure that cutting back on our police force is gonna be the way to go. But it's something to have a good look at, okay? Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. I see Mr. Ormsby, I believe I saw another hand in the back, can I get, can I get a general idea? How many other people would like to speak, and I would like to qualify that by saying, we meet again in two weeks. You heard me say earlier, I don't want the conversation around this public participation to be, so, anyway.
There's so far, I see three in the audience, ma'am.
Okay, so, Mr. Ormsby?
Four, sorry, I didn't see you over there.
Okay. As a matter of procedure and because of the hour we're getting to, I'm gonna shut it off at those four. And then I would, as I, as we always have, please, if you have something to say. Or you think of something tomorrow, you can come to the next meeting, all of our information is listed on the website, give us a call. All of that. I, I, the last thing I wanna do is create the impression that I'm shutting off conversation, I'm just kind of staggering it again, okay, Mr. Ormsby.
I'll make it quick.
Sure.
You asked for solutions, well, right now, people aren't, they're busy. And they're trying to earn a living and they don't make all the different meetings that are out there. And, and then votes all the time go through when you say, why do people vote for that? Uh, seniors are having a hard time in Bucksport. I still work so I can pay the bill, but it's huge and I don't like it. When I, Roger Raymond was here, uh, my taxes never, for my home downtown, were never over fifteen hundred dollars. In all the years he was here, it went up some years, went down some years. But in the last three years, they've gone from thirteen fifty to four thousand six hundred for my home. And I do have two other properties, so I pay a lot of money in taxes.
Mike, you're saying, you're, you're saying, I'm not trying to cut you off, in, in fact, I'm doing what we said we weren't gonna do, keep talking.
Okay. My only point is, how about never letting the tax bill for people go higher than ten percent in a year? That way the seniors might be able to manage that, you know, just like they get their three percent social security raise, okay? Well, a ten percent is, is hurting them there, but right now, forty percent is ridiculous. And last time my house went up, it was a hundred and twenty two percent, so it's gotta stop. And I, I don't, I don't, we have a lot of stuff and I understand it has to be paid for, but. It's just, just a suggestion.
Thank you.
Make a rule that it doesn't go up more than ten percent in a year, and that way, there is some control whether people vote for things or not, okay? Thank you.
Yes, sir. So you heard from the older generation about the taxes and how they're struggling to pay them. I was the first time home by in Bucksport, twenty twenty. Nobody told me in twenty twenty that this will be the cheapest you will ever pay to live in Bucksport. Cause since twenty twenty, I had to quit my job, start my own company, to be able to afford to stay in Bucksport. Okay, so from the younger generation, we can barely afford to live here. Right, the, the wages are not competing with this guy that lives in Bar Harbor that comes and assesses our houses.
I, I wanna, I wanna, I'm glad you said that, because I, I, I'm gonna address that, because I, I. I don't mean this to take words from councilor Rabs, but. I, I don't put the blame on the tax assessor. I don't think there's a very good understanding at the moment of what, of how tax assessing works. The tax assessor is, is licensed in the state of Maine and is licensed by the Department of Maine Revenue Services. And has a number of procedures that he or she has to follow. I am extremely confident in telling you that our tax assessor. The fact that property values are where they are, and I'm gonna talk about that at the end. Have anything to do with the fact that the person who's assessing the taxes live in Bar Harbor.
What's his salary a year?
I don't know it off the top of my head.
Can he even relate to this town?
Uh, he's a part time assessor, I do know that, um, but I, and.
Right, the struggles are real, that's all I wanna say on that.
That I agree with, I'm not arguing with you on that.
And that's the younger generation, so if you want Bucksport to continue to grow, we're gonna have to be able to afford to live here.
I agree.
All right. And now some things that we could try to work on, A I, pretty much developed for efficiency. Every question that was asked here that, you know, we don't have the answer right now for, I was able to get the answer like that. It's made for efficiency.
Sure.
I think we should introduce it, it, it could also could be scary, right, I'm, I understand both sides, but I think we need to introduce it. Into certain areas of where we maybe could improve.
Sure.
Right, and the cap, that should have been given, there should be a cap, because the working people are working.
Yep.
Right?
I agree with you.
Yeah, the cap, I think.
I agree with the.
What do we need to get something, cause I, I don't know, I completely, this is my first time ever being. Yeah, shaken, right, I'm not a public speaker.
Don't sweat it.
What do we have to do to get things like this on the vote?
I'll talk about that, but I, 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 cause I've thought a lot about it and I'm really concerned with how we move forward from here, right? I, I think if I were sitting in the audience, I would wanna know, pardon my language, what in the hell are we gonna do from here? Okay, so, I, I, I have some suggestions, I'm sort of the other, other counselors do too, it's not gonna be something we only discuss this evening. But we'll talk about that.
Okay, and we'll think about adding A I in.
I would. As somebody earlier said, I would not, I, I don't feel that we're in a position really to take a whole lot off the table unless it's illegal.
Right, valid. Cause it was built for efficiency, so it could help.
This lady has to be next or she's gonna gnaw on my arm, but listen, I have to go back to Mike just for a second about. You know, about participating and so forth, and one of the things that I forgot to mention when, when I was rattling on about this school budget. You know, we had the Performing Arts Center meeting and then we had the budget validation. That you go in, the polls opened at seven in the morning, they stayed open till eight at night. Um, and the only thing on the ballot to look at was the school budget. We have thirty seven, thirty eight hundred registered voters in the town of Bucksport, you know how many people voted that day? Ninety nine. Ninety nine on a twenty million dollar budget, now I get what Mike's point is about, hey, we're all out there working, we're doing different things. But we have to start paying attention to this too, we have to start showing up at these meetings. I would love to see this place filled like this every bloody two weeks to let people tell us what they think. Please take this natty look, so else I'm, I'm doing.
She's next.
Christina Reiber.
Hi Christina.
I'm your neighbor in East Bucksport, Bucks Mills Road, lived here thirty years. And my taxes went up thirty two percent from five thousand eight hundred to eight thousand three hundred and twenty five.
She beat things.
Um, I, each month will pay one thousand two hundred to make my commitment that you have done, but this is no mystery. This is no mystery of how this happened, eleven years ago, the mill closed, the mill paid forty percent of the budget, forty two percent, whatever. And then what happened through those years, we have modified and taken in and made it very nice for the, the townspeople. To, and feel like they're accommodated, that their taxes did not go up forty percent. Okay, so it, we've taken the surplus, which was our overtaxing, and then we've added and added and taken from here and, and taken from there. And now, as the auditor, the auditor said, the rubber hits the road, and this is it. Eleven years later, I haven't forgotten, I was here. I, and I see the whole process and I saw the eight, nine thousand surplus, which is not, not, and now, we had ninety days. And now we have thirty days of revenue for the, for the town. This is not rocket science, so what, what I think just has to happen is we have to cut forty percent. We have to be living within our means, eleven years ago, eleven years ago, we had a big brother. And that big brother paid them a big share, we don't have that big brother, we're trying to get all these industries in to replace it. It isn't working, the people that are here are these townspeople. And we're putting the thirty two percent on their backs and it's not right, and yes, we have to get creative. But this cannot sustain, this is going to be a ghost town. With all the for sale signs going up because they can't afford to live here. And I empathize, cause I was that, that guy, the young guy thirty years ago who moved to Bucksport and I thought, wow, this is a great place. And it was, and it is, but we have got to maintain reality, listen to the auditor. We hired him, we paid for him, he, he's telling us the truth, the numbers don't lie, the numbers don't lie. So I'm asking, not on just my behalf, but on the behalf of the town, let's be reasonable.
We hear you.
Thank you, thank you.
The auditor to which she speaks, uh, was here last Thursday. He came along and said that we currently have thirty days of fund balance. His two-year plan is to get us back up to sixty-day fund balance and revisit the five-year capital plan. You're exactly right, ten years ago, our rainy day fund was six point eight million dollars. It's now three hundred and twelve thousand.
Yeah, nice.
And, and another number I forgot, you know all these millions of dollars we spent on the roads? You know when we're gonna finish paying that off? Twenty twenty-nine.
One more comment in the back, I wanna make sure the counselors have time to.
It's me again.
Hi there.
So, um, as far as the taxes go, I totally agree with Paul. It was done wrong. I don't mind paying more taxes, I didn't wanna pay what I had to pay, but I understand every house I have ever owned for the last forty years, I've had to pay more taxes every year. Not a problem, it's what happens. However, when we get a bill in the mail and we got thirty days to come up with that extra money, that's the problem. There should have been a note with that bill. I loved what whoever wrote on the website about the explanation as to why it went up.
That was our town manager.
Thank you very much, but it was a little late. Little late, and not everybody looks at the website news. We all have mailboxes. Print it out, send it to us, so we understand, it could have been very easily attached to that tax bill. And then people would go, oh, okay, now I understand, doesn't mean we like it, but at least we would understand. We had, we were totally blindsided, I'm sure everybody in this room was blindsided by that tax bill.
For the second time.
Yeah, and we only have thirty days to pay it. How about you extend us another thirty days so people can come up with the money? Or make it so instead of paying half, maybe we pay quarterly. It would be a lot easier on people than all of a sudden having to come up with that money. I know a lot of people have their, um, taxes in escrow, we do not, the loan that we got didn't allow it. So, we've gotta come up with that extra money that we weren't planning on. And, I mean, we're elderly, if you can put it, I don't know what you consider elderly, but we're sixty-plus. We don't have that money, I don't know where it's gonna come from, I guess my husband's gonna have to DoorDash more, so he can make more money to pay the taxes. But if you could consider giving us another thirty days or letting us pay quarterly, that's what I'm asking. And next time, please let us know, and also, it was on the website, wasn't on the Facebook page. The, um, positivity Bucksport or whatever, people were complaining. I copied it and pasted it to there, so people would know, nobody knew. Cause they didn't go to the website to read, not everybody has that capability or the knowledge that it's there. So, put it everywhere, so people can see, that's all I'm asking. Thank you.
I'm gonna give counselors, oh. Please, yep, uh, this will be the last comment, I'm not trying to offend anyone. Okay, yep.
Hi, my name is Melissa McClellan, I live at fourteen twenty Bucks Mills Road. Uh, my husband and I moved here in twenty twenty-one, we were very excited, we moved from Holton and, oh, reasonable taxes, thank God. We have a dump that we don't have to pay for, like, extra for, great, so excited, and then, um, every year, you know, got the normal seeming tax increases, and then last year, we had a very significant jump. This year, sixty-one percent, our taxes went up to seventy-one hundred dollars and it was just like, oof. Um, you know, we save for our taxes every year, so, that we can be prepared, and every year, I try to, um, set aside, you know, a thousand more, two thousand more, so I can just be prepared for the increases, I expect a little bit inflation. But like, we're being hit from every side, so, um, I need to own tonight, I've learned a lot of things and one of the things is that I've been very apathetic, um, and I haven't gone to budget meetings, I haven't gone to school boards, I homeschool my kids, so like, I'm not taking advantage of the school. And, um, so I think what I've learned tonight is that I need to own that, I need to start going to these meetings, I need to start speaking up. Um, as far as solutions, something I thought of while we were talking tonight or listening to everybody talk was that maybe, um, on the ballots, pretty much anytime I see anything that seems like bond, more money, I vote against that, because I'm, I'm pretty like, we need to cut down, we don't need to add all this extra stuff. I feel like if we could word things in a clear way, so that people who are simple, which let's be real, as most of us, like, most of us don't speak in fancy language, most of us aren't attorneys or anything like that. Write it in a clear, concise way, hey, guess what, if you vote for this, your personal taxes will be going up fifty percent or sixty percent or whatever, so the people know and they can be like, heck no, I'm gonna cut this spending, I don't wanna spend that much, cause I think it can sound really good until you're actually going and paying the bill. Um, you know, I want to have good, safe roads, you know, I want to have them plowed in the winter, I want to have law enforcement, I'm very pro law enforcement. Um, I wanna live in a safe town, but I feel like areas like this, the school budget and municipal, we could cut back, just like we all cut back on our personal budgets, like, we're all having to, we're saying, okay, guess we gotta go to rice and beans for a while or whatever to, to make do, but, um, is there any way that the school board budget, since there was such a little turnout? I know the school year is about to start, but is there any way that could be, um, like, fixed in any way for this, we have to wait till next year?
Not that I'm aware of, it's, it's cast and stuck.
So, it'll be May.
It was discussed, it was voted.
It was, it was approved by the voters.
Okay. Alright, well, I wanna say thank you to you guys, cause I know you guys, you give up a lot of your time and do appreciate what you guys do, I know it's probably thankless, um, but I'm gonna be more of an involved citizen.
I'm gonna give counselors a chance to speak, I don't mean to put anyone on the spot. I see Counselor Harris' hand first.
Yeah, um, I, I, I guess I, I won't belabor any points, but I appreciate the input and people, uh, coming to council today. I think, uh, there's some ideas there, I think we have two questions to, we, we've heard a lot tonight that people, when they moved to Bucksport, they were happy about the tax rate. People were also happy about the services, and I think as citizens, all of us on council, live in Bucksport, as citizens here, um, we have to ask ourselves some really hard questions, and I would invite you all to come to the next budget sessions when they start. Because we're gonna be asking some hard questions. Things like the playground, things like the skate park, things like public safety, things like the ambulance, the street sweeper, the snowplows, the waterfront. We have to ask ourselves about what, where willing as a town to cut together. And that would be really wonderful to have your input next budget season, cause it's gonna probably be one of the hardest budget seasons I've seen in the thirty years that I've been in this area. So, I just appreciate your input, I hear all of your ideas, um, and that's all, I just wanna thank you for coming and sharing tonight.
Any other counselors?
Same thing, we do need input, we need a lot of input, and if you, nobody needs to feel obligated to be here every week, cause there's so many ways to hear it.
These meetings are on YouTube, this meeting tonight is on YouTube, type in Town of Bucksport. You can watch this meeting all over again tomorrow, if, if, if you'd like. And every meeting going forward, go to YouTube, type in Town of Bucksport, I interrupted you, Counselor Rankin, and you have my apology.
But you can also email any of us and have it forwarded to all of us, and we just, we're gonna have to have input, because there's only two ways to keep the services we have, it's either cut it or we get a big moneymaker in, which we can't really control that. It's owned by s- three different entities, three different entities. The town owns none of that.
Is there any plans to do something with it? Salmon farm, is that, uh?
For a lot of money. They really did intend on putting in the salmon farm, there's a lot of people think, oh, they lied to us, they didn't lie to us. They spent millions getting all their permits from the Fed, the state, from us, engineering. The plan was two hundred and fifty million dollar investment. Covid hit, the quotes came in at four hundred. They couldn't do it. They looked for more investors, they kinda went silent. As Tracy said, they pay their taxes every year, we have no control over what they do with that land, as much as we'd love to have them do something, we have no say, all we can do is try and help them if they come to us with a proposal, you can say, yeah, what can we do to help you do something?
So, they are paying their taxes though?
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
But what, what incentive, what incentive does a business have?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. First of all, Luke, uh, I should have asked you to come up here, but yep.
Sorry.
Yep.
As far as their taxes, their land is valued at, it's high, and then they can say mail rates is everybody else.
Right, but we have, like, the, we're seeing the mill's gone, we're not getting that tax money, we're not getting some money, so.
Absolutely.
The biggest portion of tax money comes from personal property tax.
That was the hugest part of the mill, right, the paper machines. The sad fact about the mill at the end, and I don't wanna go down this rabbit hole, cause again, I know what it, but the sad fact at the end was that the, the value of the mill from a, on a spreadsheet, as somebody who grew up in a household whose father worked in the mill, wasn't the mill workers. On a spreadsheet, it was the paper machines. When they pulled, when they shut the mill down and they took the paper machines out, that's where the impact to the taxes was. Into, when, and I'll talk about this at the end, and I promise I won't bore everybody to tears, but I do wanna talk about that valuation and what's happened since then. Anyway, I, I do appreciate your, the info, because you're right, I think you've done a really good job. It is a succinct way of encapsulating what's going on. Yep, I didn't mean to, I, I know you had a question, so.
No, I, I was just wondering, what incentive does a business have to come to Bucksport, like, to start a business?
I can't hear him.
The, the question was, what incentive does?
Does, does a business have to come to Bucksport, to start a business?
I think, in the, in the instance of Whole Oceans, um, they have a lot of, they, their plan hasn't changed, it's just the cost of the project, and it was not the taxes here on Bucksport that were the problem. And I would also say this. This is not a, only a Bucksport problem.
No, it's a whole.
This is, right, this is, this is, this is across the entire, and this is not, I'm not deflecting, please don't take it that way. And this is not me saying, oh, don't hold us responsible for any of this, this is all, that's not what I'm saying. But what I am saying is, is that i- it's not just Bucksport, yeah, um, and I think for a business like Whole Oceans, if they can make the dollars and cents work, there is incentive, because that's a good spot for what they were trying to accomplish, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else from the council?
I've got a pile of stuff.
I just wanna finish.
Oh, sorry, Captain. The town code says you can do that. I've really tried, folks, I promise, I've tried to do the right thing.
W- one thing I did, I, we can't put any blame on the tax assessor here, this, he was just doing exactly what the state formula told him to do. We, I believe we as a council failed on the communication part. We don't have the paper anymore and we're not quite used to that yet. And we need even suggestions on what is the best way, without sending out mailers every three weeks, because that's gonna increase the budget even more.
I mean, I'm a young generation, I don't.
Well, let, 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 let the councilman finish his thought.
But we, we do need, even if it's a survey right now, I wanna send out something to get ideas from people. And then we can have the discussions based upon, okay, if one person mentioned it, we can look at it, but if three hundred people's mentioned it, maybe we really need to look at it. And we, we're trying on Facebook, on the, the website, as much as I hate Facebook, whatever, to communicate the best we can, and I'm sure there are other better options for that and more options, and I, I put this on us, that the communication on the taxes. I, we have brought it up in the, in years past, that we need to get prepared, cause this day is coming. But I don't know, is it was put upon everybody common knowledge? So, I, I think we own that, not the tax assessor, the tax assessor is just, that's, that's black and white for them. It's, this, these are the numbers the state says, and this is what happens.
I, I think we can, I think we've been able to show why the taxes where they're at. It was that beginning part that, to everybody spoke eloquently tonight about that we didn't know it was coming, we had thirty days, et- et cetera. I do like what you're saying about getting input, but here's another interesting thing. From when we started back in January till just a couple of weeks ago, the mayor here, every time we would begin a town council meeting, he would give this preamble, and the preamble would, you can watch this on spectrum cable, blah, blah, blah. You can go online, blah, 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 you can text us, you can email us, you can, what's the other thing? Oh, phone us! And we would answer your questions right then and there. From Janu- the second week in January till now, do you know how many people took advantage of that? Zero, zip, squat, nada. We will listen to you, for God's sakes, tell us what you want. Ed's right about, this is where we're at. If you wanna keep these services, this is what we gotta do, if you don't, make suggestions to us, we'll listen. We'll do our best, and then finally, I'll keep quiet, I promise. I wanna clear up some, um, inaccurate information that's along the lines that you went down. There was information about the playground equipment, how it was over three hundred thousand dollars, et cetera. Back in the beginning, it was gonna exceed that number. It was cut back to, um, thanks to the work ethic and effort of Rich Rotella. Uh, they downsized it, and through the American Rescue Plan, that equipment is cost to the town people, zero, and it's being delivered next week. So that, that playground equipment is zero to the townspeople, not three hundred thousand dollars. Another thing that was floating around was, uh, we're gonna have a fourth ambulance. There's no fourth ambulance coming, folks, what's happening, and I've spoken to the fire chief just a week ago and the town manager before that, is that the unit that was ordered in twenty twenty-two and was supposed to be here now, has been delayed until the spring of twenty twenty-six. And when that ambulance comes in, that will become ambulance one, ambulance one will come over to become ambulance two, two will become three, and three will no longer exist, it'll go away. We're only gonna have three ambulances, and just to reiterate, the mayor beside me here does not make six figures, if he does, I want him to adopt me. That's not gonna happen either, but thank you for listening to my tirade tonight, and I'm out of stuff, believe it or not.
Thank you, Counselor Rabs. Counselor Bishop.
Alright, um, as many of you know, I am very accessible, so the things that I will talk about or rebut to previous conversations that I've had tonight, you can contact me privately after the meeting or another time, because there's a lot of subject matter here and a lot of content that I'm gonna touch on. But hopefully, you'll take some of what I say and look into some of it on your own. The cap that has been brought up, there was a municipal tax cap that was removed by the one thirty-first legislature on a state level. And that was, um, I think it was LD twenty-one oh two, and that was last, I think it took effect last year, is when it actually happened. And that is why the state is seeing these state level issues, that we are, we are not the only community that is having this meeting in this format. It's happening all across the state, and it is directly because of the removal of that cap. To implement something on a town level, our own cap, I would question with Maine Municipal Association what the legality and possibility of that would be, that's something we'd have to follow up with later.
Legislature, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, on a, but for, um, I'm looking at my notes as we're talking here, but the individual, I say favoritizing, you know, favoring anyone's individual scenarios or what our policies are. Um, I just wanna make sure we consult with Maine Mayor, with, uh, Maine Municipal Association on that. Last year, we did delay the tax bills thirty days. That was a different situation, but that was because, um, the way things took their process with timing. Some of the information that we needed was late, so we did delay it thirty days. Uh, the trash trailer, that was junk six years ago, and we have done, as well as we have done now, strictly because of our mechanic Matt, uh, being able to put it together and make it happen for us. That's the only reason we have functioned this long with that. To cut forty percent across the. To cut forty percent across the board amongst a lot of departments, uh, that would be tho- that would be a bad idea. You think your property taxes are bad, your homeowner's insurance would be bad. If we messed with our fire department staffing and our ability for our ISO rating, uh, insurance companies would throw an absolute head fit with a lot of those, a lot of those scenarios. Um, and a lot of communities are seeing some of that with rural areas, um, so there's a structure to that that would have to take place. Um, the dissemination of information in the papers, we used to get a lot in the enterprise for a really reasonable rate, for a very good price, for when we were having meetings. We are legally required to post a lot of the meetings that we have publicly, but without the enterprise, that means we have to put it into a different format. And that costs us a lot more money with the other surrounding papers for what we are billed. So that's a cost that has gone up for us drastically. We are not legally allowed to use Facebook as a, uh, legal dissemination of the information element for us to give notification for meetings. Um, so when some people do or don't get these meetings and the information, that's, that's why we can, we can put them on there, but it doesn't qualify. Does that make sense?
It doesn't qualify as the public notice. We can still notify the public on Facebook, but that can't be the only way we do it. It doesn't qualify as the public notice.
We still have to spend the money to publicly post it. So those are some of the answers and segues to a lot of the scenarios that have been brought up tonight. That's what I have. Anything on that, feel free to get ahold of me tomorrow.
Anyone else? Councilarian?
Just briefly, I don't need to restate all the things that have been said. I agree, all the points that were, I wanted to share have been said, basically. I just want to say that for people who, who really do believe, and Luke had mentioned this last week, if you watched the meeting online, you can ask about your valuation if you think there's a, there's a building that shouldn't have been counted, or you're he said there's a rating system for finishes. If you think yours is literally wrong, you have, it's your right to look into, to get that information looked at. So please know that that is, it is something that you can do. And, um, I hope it's, it's obvious to folks, but we, um, we're all, we're all here, because I think I can speak for everyone. We care about this community and its people. That's, that's why we chose to be on council, right? So we are certainly aren't, it's not to our benefit to raise people's taxes. We don't want that to happen. We don't want that burden. It affects all of us as well. So, um, just it's important for me to, for people to know that, you know, we're coming to this from the best possible angle we can, and we're, and, and I, I do want to keep hearing people's ideas. And some of them legally won't work, but, you know, we will, we'll look at them. We, we talk almost every single meeting about how can we save money? It's a constant conversation, so please keep sharing.
Thank you.
There's some comment.
Oh, I know.
I just wanted to say. Um, talking about not being able to afford to inform us, I think we need to rethink that.
We can inform, foredo inform you. Uh, communications.
The money, you know, I mean, what's most important is that we're all involved and we're informed.
Agreed.
And, um, I've had a hard time finding out what's going on. I'm not big on specifics anyway, I mean, but now I'm very involved. I want to be, but, you know, people need to know what's going on. Everybody's so busy just trying to make enough money to survive. They don't have time to, you know, be trolling the internet, trying to figure out where you are, what's going on, what this means, what that means, how we can deal with our taxes. I'm a senior. I worked very hard to get my little house, and now it's looking like I'm gonna be out of it real soon. If things keep up to where they are. And how is that okay? I mean, this town, does it, who does it work for? Does it work for the people here? I mean, does it?
Absolutely.
If it does, then why is everybody so unhappy and having such a hard time? I mean, something needs to change.
Agreed. Yep.
That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Folks, I'm gonna finish up, and I don't want you to take anything that I'm about to say as deflection of responsibility. I am not deflecting responsibility at all. Um, I want to be clear, however, valuation, the state valuation, of course, is done by the state. And it runs two budget cycles behind. So let me, let me tell you what that means. When the mill closed, a lot of people in this room will remember that almost exact date, but it was at the end of twenty fourteen. The valuation of the mill, however, didn't fall off until twenty sixteen. And that's important to this conversation because of this. Because in twenty sixteen, this town was valued by the state of Maine at six hundred and seventy-three million dollars. Today, the state of Maine values the town of Bucksport at seven hundred and fifteen million, eight hundred fifty thousand dollars. The town of Bucksport is worth six percent more than it was the day that, when the mill closed, according to the state of Maine. I'm not doubting that number. I'm, I'm, I, please don't take how I just phrased that as a, valuation is what valuation is. When the mill fell off, the value went from six seven, six seventy-three to four thirty-four. And the Bangor Daily News had some of this in there, but I want, I want to elaborate on what the Bangor Daily News talked about. So in twenty seventeen, the valuation went to four hundred and thirty-four thousand, and climbed only very slightly until we got to twenty nineteen. In twenty nineteen, uh, actually, let's go to twenty twenty-one, I will bore you with. In twenty twenty-one, it had climbed to four hundred and fifty-nine. Remember, I just told you that this year it's seven hundred and fifty. Since twenty nineteen, the valuation of the town of Bucksport has climbed sixty-two percent. I'm gonna let that sit there for a minute on purpose. But that, but that, but you, I, yeah, I, I, but I can't, you know what I mean, yep. I also, we also have the benefit of hindsight on that. I've got this, I've got this whole chart now that shows what valuations. In twenty twenty, if anybody had told us that in five, five short years, this town's valuation would be higher than the day that the mill closed, is there anybody in this room that would have believed that? And the, and the number I just quoted you is as of April the first, twenty twenty-three. I've talked to a number of real estate agents. Our deputy mayor is one. House sales, the prop- property, when houses sell, that's, the prices aren't going down. The only thing that's happened is that there's fewer properties available. Economics one oh one tells you what happens when things become scarce. So I'm only highlighting that for one reason. And again, I'm not deflecting, because I've heard everything you've said, and I agree. We are going to have to take a look at what we're spending our money on. That may be the understatement of the night, but you, but you know what I'm, what I'm saying. But I highlight it for this reason, and I warned Councilor Bishop I was gonna be doing this, because you'll know why in a minute. The state of Maine, in its, in this past budget year, rolled one hundred and fifty-two million dollars into its rainy day fund. The state of Maine has a rainy day fund that has approached the legal limit for its rainy day fund. In the state of Maine's rainy day fund, there is one point zero three billion dollars. Meanwhile, we are reading every day. I, 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 I'll ask the question, and I'm not being snarky. If you're gonna put your house up for sale tomorrow and go move somewhere else, where are you gonna move to avoid this? I talked to somebody the other day who moved to a town in Waldo County that has almost no services, as they described it, from Bucksport. Said, guess what? Price of my house has gone up, I mean, the value of my house is up a little bit. My mill rate's higher, and I'm paying more in property taxes than I was back in Bucksport. Again, I'm not trying to deflect anything. But the con- the conversation at some point is gonna have to get to, what are we going to do from here? Where does this go? How do we fix this problem? Councilor Bishop, also Representative Bishop, has heard me rant about this. This has to get past the Democrat and Republican problem. I'm very, I feel that this council does productive work, and I'll tell you one reason it is. A, eh, eh, there isn't a, a lot of money personally, and, but for us, in terms, nobody's throwing money at us to make decisions, right? But B.
My tax bill went up higher than what I get.
Well, true, okay. But also, eh, eh, the, there's, we don't play the party game here, and we're really, really respectful of one another. We're past the Democrat Republican problem. This has got to be something that the state of Maine looks at and says, okay, we've got one point, we have reached the legal limit of our rainy day fund. What are we gonna do about the fact that every newspaper you open just has a list of towns going through the same thing? Now, again, let's, let's circle back, because I told you I'm not trying to deflect anything, not trying to deflect anything. What, we do need to take a look at everything we spend. We do need to have more public involvement. I agree with Councilor Rabs's word, complacency. We as a group have gotten complacent. What I can assure you is that the communication around budget meetings, budget items, things like that moving forward is going to be a hell of a lot better than it has been. We should have done a better job realizing that once Don Hot, Don Houghton died, and the enterprise went out of business, that there was gonna be a gap there. We're gonna own that, and we'll fix that. But this is just, this is something that, we had a goals meeting in February. We met to specifically talk about the budget on April the tenth, April the seventeenth, April the twenty-fourth, May the eighth, May the twenty-second. June the twelfth, we had the public hearing. There was almost as many people in the room that night as there was now. I opened the public hearing for the meeting, for the budget, and I said, this is the time for the public to contribute any thoughts to the budget. Nothing. I was surprised. You can watch the tape if you'd like. I remember then saying, folks, I want to make sure you understand, this is the part where if you have any concerns with the town budget, you, you speak up. Nothing. I closed the public hearing, we had a motion and a second, and I gave the room another opportunity to speak up. Nothing. So, yep, that part we're gonna own, right? But there is a complacency. There is a complacency. There is a complacency. I have to call that out. I'm not gonna blow, I'm not gonna blow, what's that?
All the people I even talked to didn't even know there was a meeting tonight, okay? So it's, it's not well-known.
Okay.
I've been here before, and there's like four people here. That's because nobody knows that there's meetings. They don't know.
But we posted, there's meetings, and we're gonna do a better job of, of announcing meetings, but when the enterprise was open, they were, they were posted in every enterprise as well. Where they had posted on the town's Facebook page.
I didn't know about the twelfth, the meeting on the twelfth. I didn't know.
Okay. The town of Bucksport's Facebook page has every meeting listed there too, with the agenda. I don't mean to go back and forth with you, and I'm not gonna continue it. I'm just gonna say that we're gonna, we are gonna do a better job communicating moving forward. Last thing, I'm gonna finish here. I'm gonna address this. I ran for reelection last fall. I spoke to as many people as I could. I said to people, because I didn't want to be elected under false pretenses or anything like that, I said to people, listen, you've got to understand that, that, you know, property taxes in all likelihood are gonna go up, and there's really only one fix for that, and that's reduction in service. I talked to people who I knew were kind of aligned with me politically, and I talked to people who I knew weren't. To a person, every one of them said, you know what? I don't want to see a reduction of services in Bucksport. I don't want to see a reduction of services in Bucksport.
What services?
Fire, police. The municipal services.
These folks out back don't get fire or police. It takes the fire department twenty-five minutes to get to my house. We have no.
That's simply not true, sir.
Sir, you can look at the packet, and there's a map of fire, there's a map of public safety reach in the town of Bucksport, and it's published every meeting. And I just encourage you to take a look at that, and it, it's a really great map if you're a visual person, and it's got little dots, and it does include outback, it does include in-town. And I just wanted to correct that, because, because folks who are tuning in from outback of Bucksport, you do have, you do have public safety coverage.
I don't want to go back and forth. All I'm saying is, is that I, I would, I would, I tried to be as honest with, with po- as people were possible, and what I'm about to say is not bragging at all, please. In a six-way race, I was reelected with over half the votes. I didn't think that was a referendum on Paul Bissonette. I thought that was a referendum on how, that people must be satisfied with the direction of the town. And we talked about in the budget season a lot about how, about the fact that, you know, the, the taxes were gonna be going up. The first time we talked about the fact that an eventual tax increase was coming was twenty twenty-one. So I, yes, I'm defending the council a little bit here, but again, moving forward, that we do need action outside of the town of Bucksport. But I, and I'm gonna finish here, I promise. I'm so encouraged, and I mean this a hundred percent, I know I had to play the heavy tonight, and anybody, there are people sitting here next to me that knew I was dreading it. I'm so encouraged that people are here this evening, and I hope it continues. Your input matters. We need to have it if we're going to fix this. But I would also just kind of nudge you and say the input needs to go beyond seven of us. This, this is a statewide problem. We're responsible for our little slice of it, and we're gonna get after it. But in terms of looking forward, how we fix this, we have got to look beyond, beyond that. I really, really appreciate everyone being here this evening. I, and I hope to see as many of you as can make it to our next meeting. We have, we meet, let me be clear, the second and third, uh, excuse me. Second and fourth Thursday of every month. Sometimes that changes, um, and we, we will communicate that well in advance.
Just one second. I forgot to ask.
Sure.
Do you have any interest to me about my interest in stopping my penalties on my behind taxes by the next meeting next month?
We would take a look at that. I'm not gonna.
Because I know when I went and called the doctor, that people with health problems, job loss, whatever, yes, you can single people out. I'm asking for myself, both for, of course, for the moment, but I really hope you all take it under consideration to do it for everybody, but do you think?
That I will anticipate. I, I'm not gonna commit to, that we will take action on your particular situation in the next two weeks. I will have a conversation with the town.
It was like two weeks? I'm sorry, I thought it was every month.
No, we, our next meeting is two weeks from tonight.
Oh.
Yep.
I thought you meant once.
Nope. Second, uh, second and fourth Thursday of every, every month. But I will speak with the, the town, uh, town manager.
If you could let me know as soon as possible, I'd appreciate it.
Jacob will take care of it. Yep. Anything else for me? Thank you, everyone. Uh, unfortunately, I don't mean that. Um, our, um, our next item on the agenda is committee assignments and scheduling. At our next meeting, what do we have?
We have cemetery at five.
Yep. Any other committees, meetings that we need to?
I'll just bring up the point that our first council meeting at six thirty every council meeting, we now have a finance committee.
Councilor Bishop, can you repeat that with someone?
I was just saying that we have reinstated the, a monthly finance committee meeting that we used to have years ago, that has been reinstated. And at six thirty every first Thursday council meeting is when we're doing that.
Great idea.
Uh, the next item is, and we'll take a little break before we go into the actual executive session, but we do need to move into executive session pursuant to one, our MRSA, uh, chapter four oh five, to discuss a specific economic development negotiation where premature disclosure would prejudice the town's competitive or bargaining position. And we will also, when we do that, need a motion to allow, uh, to have Rich and Luke here. We will do that after we take a break and let people file out. We will not be taking any action coming out of that meeting. The only action we are taking from this point forward is to adjourn. Thank you, everyone.
Fair enough.
Thank you.